Good evening. Um, it is September 8th, Tuesday night, 6:00 PM. And I'd like to call the Anacortes City Council meeting to order. Matt, did you hear that?
Yep.
I did.
All is well.
All is well. All right, we're at, we're, we've called the meeting to order. Ms. Hunt, would you take the role?
Mr. Carter?
Here.
Mr. Young?
Here.
Mr. Walters?
Here.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Here.
Ms. Moulton?
Here.
Mr. McDougal?
Here.
Mr. Miller? Thank you.
Mayor Gere.
Yes, Mr. McDougal.
I'd like to excuse Mr. Miller from this evening's meeting. He's away in a training.
Thank you. Um, and is that a motion? So, need a second probably?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, motion carries. We'll excuse. We're gonna move on to item two. We've now seen some committee reports. Um, COVID update. I do not have any new information this evening. Follow up next week again, so I'm gonna pass that. Um, we'll move on to LTAC Committee. Um, was anyone there besides Mr. Miller? So I think we'll move that to the next, um, next week. And I know that Joanne is working with, uh, the different groups that we awarded money to for this year, but because of COVID cannot have their events. So, um, they're talking about holding that money for next year for them. But she'll give more in-depth report next time. And then item two C is the museum committee. Who has a report for that?
Uh, Mayor Gere.
Yes, Ms. Cleland McGrath.
Yeah, so, uh, Councilmember Young and Councilmember McDougal and myself met with, uh, Mr. Lunsford. And a lot of it we're gonna discuss, um, later this evening, but two points. One is that, um, Governor Inslee's modified Phase Two openings. So museums can now be opened. So they are in the process, or probably a little bit past it now that it's been a week or so. Um, they have their plans in place. They're gonna do a soft opening. They're gonna do 25% capacity at the museum. Um, one-way travel, masks are gonna be required, hand sanitizer is available. Um, and they're gonna start out doing kind of bubbles and hopefully do appointments so that they can, they can kinda get into the swing of things and see how it works. Um, if people walk up, they're welcome to call on the phone. And if, uh, the time is available, they're welcome to come and do a tour of the museum. Um, so that should start, you know, this September. I don't know if it's already started, but we were hoping the first half. Um, and then, uh, the Maritime and Preston probably won't be open until... Oh, I'm sorry. The Maritime Museum will probably be open this fall to kind of make up for lost time. So if people wanna frequent it, but the Preston will stay closed through the end of 2020. Um, and the other thing is they're just working on the Mitchell mural intake. Kind of, um, figuring out all of the paperwork that's necessary since now the city is the owner with, uh, the different, um, businesses that have his murals up on their, on the wall and making sure that all of the documentation is in place. And then also, you know, they're working on using LTAC funds for a podcast theory and oral tool, oral tour. And then they're also, um, got the, uh, coloring book and things like that working on it. So just they're progressing with that and, and everything's going well. And then, uh, we talked about the Tommy Thompson train in our smaller committee, and I'm sure we will get into it later this evening.
Okay, thank you very much. Any additions to that report?
No, she did wonderful.
All right, thank you, Mr. Young. Okay, then item, um, two D is the fiber committee.
Uh, Mayor Gere. The, the fiber committee is scheduled to meet this week, uh, on Thursday. So our, our previous meeting was August 27th. I believe we reported on it at the, um, at the subsequent city council meeting.
So we'll do fiber and COVID next week. And LTAC.
Perfect.
Yeah, so we'll get all caught up next week. All right, so at this time, item three is public comment. And what I'd like to do at this time, I'll open it up for public comment. And if you're here to speak on the train, um, I would actually like, you know, hopefully you would wait and, uh, speak on the train while we're talking about the train. So keep that in mind, and I'm gonna go to see who our, um, attendees are. As many have their hand up to speak at this point. Okay, one attendee, Zoom, whoever Zoom three is. Can you, uh, join us and give us your name and...
You've been allowed to talk. Zoom three, you'll need to unmute your mic.
Um, okay, can you hear me?
Yes, welcome.
Oh, that's great, thank you. My name's Hayden Thompson. I'm, uh, one of Thomas T. Thompson's junior's son. And, uh, I wanted to speak on behalf of the Thompson family and my mother, Ann Thompson.
So will you be able to join us during the discussion in a few minutes when we get to that?
A- absolutely. I'm kind of new to Zoom. My wife's here helping me, so...
Okay, so I think would be great. You can speak now, but I think it'd be more, um, appropriate if you waited till we got to item five C, and then I would call on you, Hayden. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
All right, well, welcome. I'm glad you're here and you figured out Zoom.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Is there anyone else who would like to speak at this time? All right, so everyone else that looks like that's on, I, I will get back to you at the time of the train discussion. And at this time, if there is no one else that wants to talk to us about anything else, I'm gonna move on from public comment to item four, which is our consent agenda. It's, and I have three action items this evening. We have the minutes in the August meeting, we have the approval of claims, and we have an interlocal for a dark fiber lease with the city of Mount Vernon.
Mayor Gere?
Young.
I, I'd like to have pulled item, um, uh, B, four B.
Well, pull that, okay. All right.
With that, I move that we approve the rest of the agenda if that's appropriate. Second.
The motion to approve consent agenda, items four A and C. We have a motion in the second, all in favor, signified by saying aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion carries. All right, Mr. Young, item four B.
Uh, the only thing I wanted to mention about item four B is to ask the, uh, city attorney as well as you, Mayor Gere, if she and you would consider asking the Attorney General or the Governor's Office if city purchases, because there are ordinance associated with city purchases and that we can't do certain things. And my question is, if cities are still making some purchases, could we have a little bit more leeway to try to do those locally? That's all. Because if we're giving money to try to support businesses, if we are giving grants to keep them open, if we are working, all of that is an economic development engine. And all I'm suggesting is that if there are additional measures contained within city purchasing itself, the rules that prevent us from doing certain things, could they be laxed just a little bit during this time to spur economic development? And I'm not sure if that question has been addressed. I, I, I think that most cities are, um, you know, are trying to do whatever they can and process to move this forward. I'm not sure if that question has been addressed, uh, by the Attorney General or the Governor or those that are in charge to see if there's any leeway in those city purchases that we normally do, to see if they could be done locally.
Um... It's no question.
Oh, thanks, Madam Mayor. Um, Mr. Young, um, I think that's a, that's a great question. So, um, I, maybe I'll, maybe I'll, I'll rephrase so I can make sure I'm capturing your ask correctly. Um, so currently, we've got, uh, purchasing policy that allows the city to give as much local preference as state law and case law give us. And so if I'm understanding you correctly, um, you would like staff to look into whether the Governor's Office would be willing to explore expanding our ability to give preference to local businesses because of the COVID emergency?
Absolutely, wonderfully captured. That's exactly what I'm saying. Because we have an opportunity, and if, if we as a state have cities, as organizations are trying to help those businesses survive, why not use an additional tool if it is possible, if it is reasonable, and if it, you know, uh, benefits the public?
Yeah, and so, you know, kinda thinking through the process for that. Um, so the Attorney General's Office generally represents the state and the state agencies. So I would think maybe the best way to go about that would be to contact the Governor's Office directly. Um, and we can certainly look into that and then report back to council on, on what we find out, so...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Does that answer everything for you, Mr. Young?
Yes, it does. And with that, I move we approve the claims in the amount of $725,856.15.
No?
Second.
There's a motion by Mr. Young, a second by Mr. McDougal. All in favor? Sign off.
Aye.
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 Close, same sign. Motion carries. All right, we're moving on to item five A under other business. It's ordinance 3075. This is a revenue bond discussion. Mr. Hoagland, uh, will be presenting tonight, and I believe he has some guests in the bond council with him. Mr. Hoagland.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council and members of the audience. Uh, it is my pleasure tonight to introduce ordinance 3075, and that is to authorize a bond issue for the, uh, Anacortes utility system. It would be a revenue bond, essentially a three-part bond issue. So it's a little bit complex and a lot of moving parts. Um, and on the meeting tonight with us are Alice Ostiak. She is our bond counsel. She works for Stradling, Yoka, Carlson and Roth. And Stephen Amano, he is our financial advisor and works for PFM Financial Advisors. Um, so as I said, it's, it's generally a three-part bond issue. Uh, we'll issue, um, issue a bond that would provide new money in the water utility, new money in the sewer utility, and would provide, um, money to refund an existing bond in the water utility. Um, so it's, uh, roughly about $12 million in the, uh, water utility that we'll be looking to raise initially, about $10 million in the sewer utility in new money. And then also, uh, probably about $8 million in, uh, refunding to, to refund the, um, the 2010 water bond. So, and that bond is related to, may remember that we have been collecting money in advance from the refineries for the past 10 years. And that money that we've been pre-collecting, we're going to use to call a large portion of that 2010 bond as well. So we'll pay a large portion, portion of that off, and what's left, we will refund. And refunding is, uh, very similar to refinancing your mortgage, where you pay off a higher debt at a, at a lower, a lower interest rate. Um, so that's kind of the, uh, the big picture. I, um, as I said, it's, it's a little bit, um, it's a little bit complicated with a lot of moving parts. So I asked, um, Alice if she could provide a bit of an overview, uh, of the ordinance process.
Great, thank you, Steve. Uh, for the record, my name's Alice Ostiak, and I am with Stradling. Um, I've been bond counsel, excuse me, to the city of Anacortes for, uh, probably 15 or more years. Um, and so worked on some of these original bond issues that we're looking at refinancing. Uh, I'm pleased to meet those of you I haven't met before. Um, it's been very nice working with Steve and his team to put this together. Um, what you have in front of you is, as Steve noted, a lengthy ordinance. Um, what it does is authorizes the issuance of this revenue debt, which is payable from all three different, or all of the systems that are within your combined utility system. Um, as a finance matter, the portion of the debt allocated to the water system will flow back to the water utility ratepayers. The portion allocated to the sewer system will flow back to the sewer system ratepayers. Um, and so it, it will be, you know, included within your rates appropriately, connected to, um, the individual, you know, utility that it benefits. Um, but we are gonna combine these three purposes here as Steve was mentioning. And what this ordinance does is it authorizes the full amount necessary for the water improvements, um, also for the sewer improvements, and I'll come back to that in a minute, and then for the refunding piece. Um, the sewer improvements will be authorized in here for, um, the full expected amount, and we're still, um, narrowing down what that number will be. Um, however, I think the finance department's strategy on this is going to be to issue only the portion of it that needs to be spent, um, within about the next 12 to 18 months, and then to come back and issue the remaining portion a little bit later as we get closer to completion of that sewer project. The, um, the ordinance that you have here, however, will authorize the full amount so that there's no question that it can come in and be done at the time when it's needed, and that the council doesn't have to worry about authorizing another subsequent ordinance. Um, what you see here, um, as you can see, this is a long ordinance with 26 different sections. Um, what it does is it pledges the revenues of the system and that it includes the covenants that the city is already bound by with respect to its outstanding debt. And so what it does is it basically tells those underwriters who are gonna buy your bonds that the city promises it's gonna continue to maintain, uh, the utility systems, collect the revenues necessary to repay them, um, and that sort of thing. Uh, so that's, I mean, that is the short version of, of the quite lengthy ordinance. The portion that you tend to be most interested is actually buried at the back in exhibit C, um, which, uh, I don't have, uh, numbers, but it is towards the end, exhibit C. And that includes the parameters, um, for this particular bond issue. Um, and so that will include the maximum principal amount that is, um, authorized. And again, we're still refining that number. It also depends on, um, you know, kind of what we know about the municipal market and the interest rates that are gonna be available. So that number will be filled in when we come bring this back to you for final adoption. And so you'll see that maximum amount there. Um, it also lists the dates. Um, this authorization will be good through the end of next year. So that allows, um, that, as I said before, that sewer project will be sort of bifurcated. So the bond issuance we're preparing for now, um, we expect to close that in October. So we'll be working very quickly after, uh, this is adopted, um, by you. But then that remaining portion could be issued anytime up until the end of next year. If it were to go beyond that, for some reason the project is delayed, then you would have to, um, act, the council would have to take action again on another ordinance or an amended one. Um, this ordinance also will set the interest rate parameters. And so based on what we know of market conditions today, we've set a very outside interest rate in here, um, with a, a true interest cost. That means basically kind of in, you know, factoring in the cost of issuance and things like that, um, parameter in here. So we have a maximum of 5% and, and not to exceed the true interest cost of 4%. However, um, and I will let Stephen talk in a minute about what market conditions are. We very, you know, firmly believe it will come in quite a bit below that. Um, in particular, with the refunding portion, um, you will see later that there is a requirement that it produce savings even after the cost of issuance. And so, um, the refunding would not occur if it wasn't gonna save you money. And so that's also included here as a condition of carrying out that portion of it. Um, the other terms in here, this, um, states, uh, item F, final maturity, is also one that council members tend to be, uh, interested in. So, uh, the plan here is for the water, the new water and sewer debt to extend. Um, I believe we're looking at 20-year terms right now. Um, the refunding portion will not be extended. It will still mature as it was originally scheduled. So we're not looking at stretching out debt. We're looking at repaying it, but at a lower interest rate and using some of that refinery payment, um, using some of that cash as well. So that, that, that portion of it will stay, uh, within the original timeframe. So that, we're looking at the next 10 years. Um, so that's, um, how that will be structured. Uh, in a... I'm sorry, was there a question?
No, I, I know you may, you may be getting to it. I just wanna make sure that either you or the other gentleman will, um, speak to it. One will be about explaining how do we determine what rate? And then secondarily, you know, how do we kick in? If that's coming later, I'm great. You know, I was just curious about how do we get that for the city? You're doing fantastic. Thank you.
Great, yes, I will get to that. Um, so I, and actually, I think this, this pretty much comes to kind of the end of these conditions that, that the council is, is putting on it. Again, as I mentioned, that refunding, um, you're looking at requiring that it produce at least 3% savings. But again, I think maybe Stephen can, uh, give the current estimates, but I believe the savings are quite a bit above that level. Um, so that's my summary of the ordinance, as far as process goes. And this, this goes to your question directly. Um, the plan is to talk to rating agencies next week, I believe. Um, once we have a rating for this, for the city's debt, um, for this debt, um, we will be able to publish what's known as the preliminary official statement, which is essentially an offering circular, um, out to the bond market. And so investors will be able to review that and understand what the credit is and, and how the city intends to repay it. Um, and then the city has chosen to, uh, utilize a competitive sale process. Um, and so rather than going out and selecting a particular investment bank to underwrite these bonds, instead, the city is going to offer them out to the bond market generally through an electronic bidding platform. And then those investment banks that you hear about, those will, they will each submit a bid on a particular morning. Um, and they will, and then the city will simply select among them based on the, the lowest true interest cost to the city. Um, and so that, I believe, we have currently scheduled that for, uh, September 30th, I think is the date we are looking at, um, but we'll confirm that that works. You know, again, based on how the market is doing at the time, um, based on what other, you know, cities are out there trying to sell bonds that day, all sorts of things. Um, and so all of the authority to go ahead and execute that sale is delegated in the ordinance, um, to allow the finance director to go ahead and, and make that happen when the conditions are right. Um, and then after that, there'll be about two weeks, um, where we sign a whole lot of paperwork, coming back and forth and that sort of thing, and that's my job as the lawyer. Um, and, uh, then we should close. We're looking at mid-October. Um, and so that's the date on which, um, the city would receive money into the water fund for that project, into the sewer fund. And then the refunding will be carried out by depositing money with a, a bank, a trustee, who will handle it escrow. Um, and they will hold on to those funds until those bonds become callable. The call date would, is, uh, December 1st. And so on December 1st, then the escrow agent will, you know, pay off the old bond, um, using those proceeds. So that's kind of the quick summary of the ordinance, what it authorizes and how this process will be, uh, will go forward. Happy to take other questions?
Just one point, if it's okay. And, uh, it seems that the, of course, interest rates right now are at remarkable low rates. And so the purpose of this is to maximize that on anything else that we need to do, because I'm not sure where we're gonna be this place again. And what this authorizes is basically that savings, but that ability to use that process in order to generate, um, a benefit to the city and the, and the systems that we run.
Correct. Um, and I will, uh, maybe I'll turn it over to Stephen now to just give a few comments on the market and interest rates currently. But as I understand, they are, they are at record lows, uh, at the moment. So, uh, I will pass that over to Stephen perhaps?
Yeah, thanks, Alice. Um, this is Stephen Amano with PFM Financial Advisors. Um, yeah, I, I mean, I think Alice did a great job of kind of explaining the process. And, and you're right, interest rates are really, um, really at or near historical lows kind of across the yield curve. Um, I can tell you, you know, based on our latest numbers run, which we ran earlier today, um, for a 20-year financing, we're probably looking at 2.5% or even maybe a little bit lower. Um, we're trying to be conservative, uh, given that we're still about a month out. Um, you know, so I, I'm happy to answer other questions. Um, just another comment, I would say, you know, I think timing-wise, we're, um, we have a, we have a pretty good schedule here. Getting in, uh, into the market late September, kind of early October before, um, you know, we see, we think there'll be more of a rush, um, of issuances in late October before the, the presidential election. So I think we've got, um, you know, good timing as we build it out here. So, um, happy to answer any other, any other questions, um, that folks have.
Mayor Gere?
Yes, Ms. Moulton.
Thank you. Um, what is the current interest rate on the bonds that we'll, we'll be refunding?
Uh, those run from about, uh, 5.5% to 6.5% for those years 11 through 20 that are left.
Thanks. Any other questions for Stephen or Alice?
Mayor Gere?
McDougal.
Um, actually, a question for Steve Hoagland. Um, what's our approximate debt service per year at the 5.5 or whatever rate that we're at?
Uh, so that 2010 bond that, um, we're looking at, uh, at refunding, the December 1st debt service requirement. So that bond is, it's a Build America bond, um, and I'm, it was... So with, with that bond, there was a program by the government at that time. Um, it was part of the stimulus package in 2000, you know, the late 2008, '09 timeframe, uh, that provided, uh, a rebate from the IRS to pay for part of the, um, part of the interest costs. So our, our debt service on that, it's a, it's, it was a $44 million, dollar bond. Um, and our debt service on that with, um, the subsidy or less, after the subsidy, less the subsidy, is 3.1 million per, uh, per year.
And now, having, having paid it down quite a bit, the refinancing at a lower rate, it's not quite apples to apples. Our debt service will drop significantly, partially because of the rate, but also because just the lower amount, the tax, the principal is lower as well.
Yeah, exactly.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, and I might add, we, so we, um, we've estimated that the refunding debt service, so that new debt service, um, will be about around 1.1 million or so. Um, so about $2 million savings, uh, per year.
Okay. And if we, if interest rates happen to still be at 5.5 or whatever, and we were to, uh, refinance this, then our payment would be more like 1.6, 1.7 maybe?
Um, sorry, can you clarify? Do you mean if interest rates at the time of, um, in a, in a month or so go back, back up to 5.5%?
Um, I was looking to just kind of establish a baseline. Like if we were to refinance at the, the rate that essentially it had been the entire time. Um, 'cause are we extending, actually, are we extending the period of payment? No, we're not.
No, we're not.
Okay, well, in that case, then purely it's, it is purely a lower rate based upon the interest rate. So that's a significant savings. That's great.
Well done, Mr. Hoagland.
Okay.
Any other questions for our bond counsel, Mr. Hoagland?
One last, one last question, if you would, Mayor Gere, about that. Um, so in this bond, just to make sure I'm understanding too, that it just allows us to be able to, um, draw up to a certain amount of money at this rate in perpetuity until it's time to pay it back, which is 20 years?
It will be, it will give the authorization to, uh, execute the bond issue up to a certain amount. But you, on the date of sale, you will receive all of those proceeds, so...
That answers my question. Yeah, I was just wondering, sometimes it's almost like a draw, but I get it. Thank you. You've done a superb presentation.
Any other questions for... Okay, so tonight's a discussion on the revenue bond. Um, and then in next week, we would like to take action. So if we have more discussion tonight about the projects or anything we wanna talk about, it'll be funded, this is the time to do it.
Mayor Gere?
Mr. Walters.
Um, I just hope, similar to, um, you know, what we said, when we funded the construction of and replacement of the 3 million gallon water tank that we've put all of the projects on the list that we reasonably need to do in the next five years. Um, I don't wanna be doing this again because we didn't plan for something. So hopefully, we've made a list of all those projects and are planning for an amount to be able to accomplish all of them.
Other comments? So are we ready to let this, um, sit for a week? And, and then if you have questions of, of Steve, of Public Works, um, please get them to him this week so we can get them answered for you before next Monday night's meeting. week, so we can get them answered for you before next Monday night's meeting. So Alice and Stephen, thank you for joining us. Mr. Hogland, any closing remarks?
Yeah, the last thing I would say, I guess, is I almost wish that Mr. Miller was here tonight. He would probably ask about the rate structure to pay for these projects. And I would remind at least maybe a couple of our council members who were here in 2015, we put a rate structure in place that had really dramatic rate increases in two years, 2015 and '16. And that was, and then subsequently, rate increases of about 7%, 4% for the next several years. But what that did is allowed a lot of these projects in the water fund, and so those rate increases were in the water fund, sorry. But the total amount that we're going to spend on those projects is about 16 million. We're going to get funding for about 12 million of that. So we did have quite a bit of cash upfront that we've been using for the design and other costs related to these projects. And that was because of the hard decision the council made those years ago that allowed us to stockpile some of that cash. And then with those, that rate structure that you put in place, we've got the rate structure to pay for this moving forward, so.
Steve, do you want to, for the audience mainly, talk about the projects we are going to fund with this bond?
Sure. In the water fund, there's really, there's three projects. One of them is a dual project. So the raw water line and new clear well, those are the, that's the biggest project. The raw water line runs from the intake pump station over to the plant, and that's, putting that line in will provide redundancy. There's currently only one line that provides that raw water, so this will provide redundancy for that process. And then an additional clear well at the new water treatment plant, which will provide additional capacity, similar to what they did, Mr. Walters, the project he was just talking about at the Whistle Lake tank, there was two tanks put in place to replace the old one, and that allows maintenance to be done on one tank while the other one is providing water and vice versa. So that'll be available at the water plant now with that. The other two items that are, that'll be funded is, we'll be paying, essentially paying the utility back for the recent property purchase, and the risk and resiliency system for the water distribution system, for leak detection, like tampering with the system, that sorts of thing. So that's that Crowley system that Public Works has been talking about. In the sewer fund, it's the new outfall project, and that's estimated to be up to a $20 million project. And that's one we've talked about that would be potentially a two-phase funding scenario. So initially, 10 million to do the initial part of the project, provide funding for the first 12 to 18 months, and then potentially up to another 10 million to finish the project out. And then the last part of it, the refunding that we talked about, is the 2010 bond issue that was initially issued to build the existing, near the new water treatment plant.
So the only thing I want to add to that is for the citizens to know is the raw water line actually is constructed under the Scagit River, so it's incredible project. It's not just a pipe, it's just, you have to go completely under the river to do that. And then the risk and resiliency is security, and I think with our regional water system, nothing is more important, that that system is secure at all times. So I'm really pleased that Public Works has moved that forward. And on the outfall to the sewer, we are looking for additional funding, as Steve said, in form of SEMA grants or whatever we can find. So thank you for that. It's complex, and, you know, water and sewer is expensive, but it's one of those essential infrastructures that all of us just take for granted every day. But, all right, well, thank you. Any other discussion for tonight?
Mayor Gear?
You're welcome.
So the flip side of my comments, to make sure that we're including all the projects that we want to be able to fund, so that we do address this one-time or two-time bond issue. The flip side is, let's not authorize projects that we haven't considered well. And so at Council Finance Committee, what I'd ask is that we limit the projects to those that are already identified in the capital facilities plan. And I don't think that we've accomplished that in this draft ordinance. Exhibit A includes a list of projects, including but not limited to, and it's not clear to me how that list is to be limited, although there's some talk of the city council being able to amend the plan of additions. I don't know that I want to authorize money for projects that haven't already been considered and been put into the capital facilities plan. Also, I think that those projects should be appropriately identified. So for instance, Romanet 2 under Exhibit A is the drilling of an additional clear well, and I'm not sure that's how that project should be described. I think it's more construction of a clear well, if I understand it correctly. And that list also includes the acquisition of a water leak detection system, which I think could be a worthwhile project, but I don't believe it's one that's currently in the capital facilities plan. So I would like to see that addressed before it comes back to us.
Thank you. Anything else? All right, without hearing nothing else, we'll bring this back to you next week for further discussion and possible action. And at this time, is there anyone from the audience that wants to comment on that? I see a hand up. And Diana Jordan New, did you want to comment on that item? Diana, are you there?
No, I accidentally hit that.
Oh, you accidentally, okay. So maybe you want to talk a little later in the evening? All right, we'll talk to you later. Thanks, Diana. All right, so now we're going to move to item 3B, which is also open for public comment. It's Ordinance 3074, Amendment Section 1.30.080 of the Anacortes National Code Regarding Executing Contracts for Dark Fiber Leases and Telecommunication Contracts. This is a discussion with possible action.
Okay, thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Tonight in your packet is a second read of Ordinance 3074, which we presented last week. And the main purpose of this ordinance is to add some council's delegation of authority to the mayor to execute dark fiber leases and telecommunications contracts. So the changes that we've added to the ordinance since last week, we had a helpful discussion at the Council Fiber Committee to help kind of guide this discussion. And what's been added is, under Subsection 180A, A, Romanet 1, you can see there that we've broken out the requirements for the mayor's delegation of authority for dark fiber leases to have four requirements. First of all, that the lease is for no more than eight strands per each lessee. Second, that the lease term is for no more than five years. Third, that the requested lease will not interfere with the city's ability to provide residential and commercial fiber services to all potential subscribers. And finally, that the lease is on a form approved by the city attorney. I did, we did make the change per Mr. Young's request to subsection B, that any contract that's not authorized pursuant to this section has to be approved pursuant to the remaining provisions of the chapter. So those are the changes that were made. I'm happy to answer any questions, and I believe Ms. Schu and Mr. Lundberg are also available. Otherwise, staff is recommending approval of the ordinance.
Mayor Gear?
Walters.
The other thing that we discussed in the Council Fiber Committee was that we circle back at some point in the near future to articulate, either in resolution or in ordinance, a more general policy on leasing dark fiber. This policy applies to what the mayor is authorized to approve, but doesn't constrain what the city council is authorized to approve. So it'd be nice to have some clarity on that in some adopted form prior to receiving our request.
Be happy to bring that forward for an upcoming discussion at a fiber committee meeting.
Mayor Gear? Yeah, and I actually think it was Councilmember Walters who brought it up the last time, and I just wanted a little clarification, maybe it was discussed in the committee meeting. There was concern about, you know, if we, if the city wholesaled dark fiber and some other business then retailed it to the general public. Is that being essentially addressed in item 3? Or is there more, was that a further discussion in the committee?
Yeah, that's a great question, Ms. Cleland McGrath. So I don't think that that is addressed in this ordinance. This language is really just the mayor's delegation of authority, and I think the concern is that council could, at some point in the future, you know, decide to lease out all of the dark fiber, you know, all the fiber system. And so Mr. Walters brought up a good suggestion in the fiber committee that maybe it could be even codified, that there be some limitations on the city's ability to lease out fiber on the network. A very minimum, you know, a strongly worded policy that provides some constraints. So I think that's what Ms. Schu will likely be looking at bringing forward.
Additional thoughts, questions, comments? So this is a discussion with possible action. Would you like a week to think about it? What are your thoughts, council?
Mayor Gear?
Mr. McDougal.
A question from Ms. Swetnam. If, I think, like if we were to say we'd like to develop a policy post, say, adoption of this resolution, such that it, I think it probably would expand more upon item number one, essentially where lease of eight strands in, say, any given run is not enough to take away, like, the city's business as far as being able to serve the community. But eight strands, let's say, across all of the major arterial sort of fiber lines within the city, that is enough to then compete directly. And I don't know that we want to actually, you know, codify sort of, not allowing for the potential for someone to lease some fiber and compete with the city for some services, like, you know, business services and things like that. But anyway, if we were to pass this resolution today, does that preclude us from adopting some policies to sort of tweak the parameters or, you know, elaborate upon the parameters in 1 through 4 here?
I don't think so. That's a really good question. I think that really all this section provides is, under what circumstances the mayor can sign a dark fiber lease without having to bring it before council. So if, you know, council wanted to develop policies that were more restrictive or more lax than this, you know, that certainly gets to the substance of the contracts that the city could then enter into. This is kind of an overlay of execution authority for the mayor. You know, if there were some big deviations, we could always do an amendment later to this language to make it align with any future policies that come up. But I don't think that this hamstrings the city in any way from being able to develop contracting policies.
Okay, great, thank you. In that sense, I'd be comfortable moving forward with this resolution.
Is that a motion, Mr. McDougal?
Let me find the language, so I can make a better motion.
All right, thank you.
A motion to adopt Ordinance 3074, maybe?
Thank you, yes. I move to adopt Ordinance 3074, granting parameters for which the mayor may sign into dark fiber contracts with third parties.
Second. We have a motion by Mr. McDougal, second by Mr. Young. Is there any additional comments from the council? And I should say, the public, is there any hands up there? Anybody wants to comment before we take a vote? Any hands, all right? So we have a motion and a second to approve Ordinance 3074. Ms. Hunt, would you take the vote?
Mr. Young?
Yes.
Mr. Walters?
Yes.
Ms. Cleland McGrath?
Yeah.
Ms. Moulton?
Yes.
Mr. McDougal?
Yes.
Mr. Carter?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you. All right, we're going to move on to item 5C, which is also open for public comment. And my thought is that we would have, Ms. Swetnam's going to do an introduction, and then we have it broken down and did two, we have two proposals this evening to look at, Mr. Brett Iwin's offer to purchase and the Anacortes Railroad Group's proposal. I thought we would get those presentations done, and then I would take public comment. And after public comment, then the council would start discussion. Is there any thoughts in addition to that? Okay.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Mr. Young.
I just wanted to make sure that, I think that there were a number of email letters to come into the council. Will those be brought forward as well?
I believe they all, everyone received them, and they'll be part of the record this evening.
I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Yeah, they're part of the record, and they will, yeah. Thank you, Mr. Young. All right, Ms. Swetnam, if you could do the introduction.
Sure, I'd be happy to. Thanks, Madam Mayor, members of council. So you have to listen to me again and see my children's artwork behind me. But tonight, staff is going to present some information, just providing the background on the train, and talking a little bit about the process and what council's options are, and really just kind of what guidance council can provide to staff at this point. So tonight, we're going to go through just briefly the train status. Wanted to remind everybody of the procedural history, how we got here. There have been some good questions about the surplus process, so I thought I'd step through that. And then I understand that there are folks who want to discuss the various proposals before council. Before I get started, I just want to mention that Brett Lunsford, the museum director, he is, he should be on the meeting, and he's available to answer questions. He's been much more involved than I have, certainly with the discussions about the train in the past, because the train has been managed by the museum department. And also, Steve Hogland, the finance director, is available as well because he oversees the surplus process, so. So to start with the review of the train status, the original donation of the train was made to the city in 2012 by Ann Thompson, Mr. Thompson's widow. The train was retired from operation, and the original donation was made by letter to the city. That letter provided that the train was to be transported to, cared for, and stored in Anacortes, and to be established as a static display for the enjoyment of the community. At the time, the city agreed that efforts will be made to raise funds for an eventual display structure. Between 2012, when it was donated, and 2019, the Anacortes Museum Foundation, with city staff support, worked with the Anacortes Railway Nonprofit Group for a number of years to identify ways to raise funds, to develop a plan for the train to be consistent with the donation. In 2018, the Anacortes Railway Nonprofit Group disbanded and had been looking into options to make the railway operational. When they When they disbanded, they sent a letter to the mayor and city staff indicating that they hoped another group would step forward and hopefully operate the train, whether that be in Anacortes or another location. The city received a purchase offer, an Anacortes Railway Purchase Proposal, in July of 2019 from Brett Iwin. So the current status of the train to date is it is stored in the train shed on the depot property, not open to the public. If the city retains ownership, then the original terms of the donation would ask that the city move forward with development of a static display of the train per that original donation in 2012. There has been some interest by outside parties, Mr. Iwin and the Anacortes Railway Group, to acquire the train and bring it out of retirement so that it could be operated. So the procedural history is how we got here today. July sixteenth of 2019, the city received a purchase proposal offer from Brett Iwin. In December of 2019, the city council adopted a memorandum of agreement between the city and the Thompson family. In January of 2020, a revised proposal from Mr. Iwin was sent to council with a March thirtieth, 2020 expiration date. There was a council-museum committee discussion on this proposal and other options in February of 2020. And Mr. Iwin presented his proposal to the council on March ninth of 2020. That original proposal had an expiration date of March thirtieth. On March twentieth, Mr. Iwin sent a purchase proposal extension, which didn't change the original proposal, just allowed the city additional time to consider his offer. And then on June sixteenth of 2020, there was a fifth addendum to the original proposal that gave the city additional time to respond. And that proposal expires on September tenth. So that's really kind of the heart of why staff has come to council today, looking for guidance on what to do with that. So just to review the 2019 MOA, the purpose of the MOA was to provide more flexibility in future plans for the train. As we recall, the original donation from 2012 said specifically that the city would put the train in a static display, meaning that it wasn't operational. So the MOA was discussed with and approved by the Thompson family, who made that original donation. And so the MOA was an agreement between the Thompson family and the city that would allow the city to consider proposals to sell the train to someone who would operate it if certain conditions were met. And those conditions were that the purchaser could demonstrate skills and knowledge to operate the train, that the purchaser could demonstrate plans for a location for the train as a public attraction, that the purchaser will commit to not significantly alter the train, that the purchaser will maintain and care for the train, and that the proceeds for the sale for it and memorialize the legacy of Thompson, I'm sorry, Thomas G. Thompson Jr. and his train. So the city, so I just thought I'd mention here that if there was a purchase offer, the city would include a language in that agreement that ownership of the train would revert back to the city if these conditions weren't met. So for example, if somebody purchased a train, you know, a year later decided that they were going to sell it for scrap, then there would be some reversionary language in there that said that it would go back to the city. Some additional considerations. So after the initial review of the Iwin proposal by city staff, there was a consensus that the city should consult with the donor of the train, Ann Thompson, because her agreement was needed for any kind of a sale of the train. So that consultation led to the 2019 MOA. The Anacortes Museum Advisory Board, which is, they're advisory to council, have reviewed the Iwin offer, and they've recommended acceptance of that offer. So at this point, there are essentially two options for the train. The first is that the city retains ownership of it and establish a static display per the 2012 donation. Or option two, the city sells the train to a third party who can meet the terms and requirements of the 2019 MOA, and they would be operating the train. So at this point, the city has received one, just the one offer to purchase, but the Anacortes Railway Group has leaned in, and they're going to be presenting some considerations of a proposal tonight. So to review the surplus process for council, there are, you know, looking first at the legal requirements, there are really three sources of guidance for us.
Mayor Gier.
Mr. Young.
Just before you move forward, Ms. Swetnam, would you go back to the previous screen?
Not that one, I'm assuming.
Right, not that one, thank you.
Sure.
All right. Well, no, you indicated that there was a unanimous approval for sale of the train to Mr. Iwin. When was that taking place? And, I mean, I didn't have any information on that, so I was just curious about that.
Yeah, that's a great-
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, Mr. Young. I wonder if Mr. Lunsford could answer that question for us?
Yeah, that was, that, the train issue was discussed at the September Museum Advisory Board meeting. And there was a, they discussed the, mainly, it revolved around the Thompson family's statements that they believed, that they wanted the train to be sold to Mr. Iwin. And so in relation to the Thompson family's statements, the museum advisory board was supportive of the council going forward with that, should they choose. That was their, there was a full support from the board for going forward with that.
So just to make sure I'm understanding you correctly, Mr. Lunsford, you're saying that the museum advisory board in September voted to unanimously approve Mr. Iwin's offer?
It was discussed, and there was actually, it didn't come to a motion. There was just, it was a discussion at which everyone basically had reached a consensus that they were in support of the Thompson's wishes, is what it came down to.
I recognize that, and I hear you about the Thompson wishes, because I think we all do respect that. But I think that the museum advisory board, would it not require an official action by the board, meaning that they have a vote, and then they push it forward?
Can I address that?
Ms. Swetnam.
Yeah, sure, it's a great question. So the museum advisory board is not empowered to make any official decisions on the city's behalf. They're just an advisory board. So what they provide to council is just a recommendation and nothing more than that. You know, we've got multiple advisory boards at the city.
Right.
Oftentimes, they deep dive into issues that council doesn't have the time to do. So it sounds like it was that, nothing more, just a recommendation, and certainly council-
No, I absolutely understand that part of it. I was just curious, because some advisory boards, they need to go through Robert's Rule of Order, where they have a process that comes forward, we second it, and then the board has a whole vote on it, and it becomes an official statement from the board. I was just wondering if that is that type of board, and did that happen in this case? Just curious about that, though.
The board, the board did offer to write a letter, you know, to summarize that consensus. And I told them that I would convey it for them at the meeting. And so, but if anybody on council would like to have a, that kind of letter of recommendation, then I can certainly return to the museum advisory board and have them say it in whatever way council would like it to be said.
Well, in this case, and not trying to be difficult, because I truly want to balance this out. If the board is making a statement saying that they are in support of it, I would like to see something from them that basically said that. I think in this type of discussion that we're going to have tonight, I find that it would be prudent, because it brings forward the wishes. We want to honor the family. But we also want to honor, you know, the process, due process. And so if this board, advisory board, believes that, it would be very helpful. That's all I wanted to say. Ms. Swetnam, please go forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Thank you. I like the emphasis on process. That's my language, so. So speaking of that, talking about the surplus process. So there are three sources of requirements, potentially, for what the city has to do with regard to selling surplus assets. So first of all, state law gives cities the power to sell assets pursuant to RCW 35A 11 010. It doesn't give the city the ability to sell those assets for less than a fair market value, however. The city is prohibited, under Article Eight, Section Seven of the Washington State Constitution, from gifting public funds. And that can include selling assets at a fire sale for less than their fair market value. I want to be clear that there isn't a requirement in this constitutional prohibition that the city, you know, pay big dollars to get fancy appraisals on things. But there has to be a reasonable and supportable assessment of fair market value for assets to be sold. There are certain circumstances where state law does require an increased level of formality for selling a surplus asset. And those are situations where a public hearing is required. So there are a couple of those that come up. First of all, if the sale of an asset is to another government agency, and the value of that asset is over fifty thousand dollars, then we have to have a public hearing. If the property was originally purchased for utility purposes and is no longer needed for that purpose, regardless of value, a public hearing has to be held. Neither of those requirements apply here, because this is a government asset, and the sale is to a private individual. But I just wanted you all to be aware that there are certain circumstances where we have had to do that for selling a surplus asset. So without much guidance from state law, then we look to whether the city has adopted local ordinances laying out and requiring certain processes for surplus sales. And we have nothing in our code, which sort of surprises me a little bit. But so there's nothing in our code that says, here's how you have to sell these assets. So we then look to city policy. The council has adopted the purchasing policy, and the purchasing policy says that the sale of surplus assets has to be completed pursuant to the requirements of the fixed asset policy. So the fixed asset policy doesn't have very specific procedures at all. The only thing that we know is that the sale has to be approved at least by the finance department. So that's really all we've got in terms of requirements that set a floor for process. So that gives the city a lot of flexibility to determine how to sell assets. So we dug into a little bit to give you guys a sense, because I think the question has come up, are we dealing with this asset the way that we deal with other assets, potentially? So the city surpluses dozens of items from the government fund each year, from, you know, office equipment to heavy equipment. So, you know, vehicles get sold, you know, desks, bookcases. And prior to the adoption of Resolution 1794, which is the fixed asset policy in 2010, there was no council-adopted process for the disposal of city assets. But Resolution 1794 provided that at least the finance department had to declare items surplus prior to sale. So the part of the idea behind that, I talked to Mr. Hoagland about this, who was on staff at the time that that resolution was adopted by council. And the balance that they were trying to strike in having that be the process was to allow the city the flexibility to be able to sell small-value items without having to bring them all to council. You can imagine, you all don't want to have to read packet materials on selling a bookcase. But it wasn't so prescriptive that it didn't provide the opportunity to bring larger or more important transactions to council, if that's appropriate. So how do we sell all the items that we sell? The main way is through public surplus auction websites. These websites allow the city and other public agencies across the country to set minimum bid amounts. So we're putting this item up for auction. It has to sell for at least a hundred dollars. And it allows us to set bid timeframe. We can leave the item open for up to forty-two days. And there are some advantages to that and some disadvantages to that. Each sale on the public surplus websites include buyer's premium, which is a payment of eleven and a half percent by the buyer in addition to the purchase price and taxes. So public surplus websites are really the only form of public auction that the city participates in. You know, for example, I know, you know, some of you may be aware, the county does sales on the courthouse steps. City doesn't do that, but that, this is the way that the city deals with public auctions. So there are situations where the city has sold items without using a public website through council action. And those are assets that are required to be sold at a public hearing. So for example, utility assets, we talked about a few minutes ago, those that require a public hearing would be done by council action. Or assets that include more complex transactions with a buyer. One example that may be coming to council soon, the city is looking at selling its fleet of Lido sailboats to an outside organization who will then agree to run the city's sailing program. So we wouldn't put those boats on the public auction website, because we want to make sure that council is approving the contract that also includes additional requirements. So the sale of the train, you know, when we're looking at how this should be sold, there are a couple of factors that have led staff to recommend that council take action on this. The first one is the requirements that are in the 2019 MOA. So council doesn't have the ability to sell this asset to any purchaser unless they can demonstrate that they've got the ability to operate the train, they have a location, et cetera, et cetera.
Mayor Gier.
Mr. Young.
Just a question for you, Ms. Swetnam.
Sure.
I think in your choice of words, you suggested that, how we should sell an item. To my knowledge, we're considering a no-bid sale for a non-surplus city asset to an unsolicited bid, and we don't know its true value. So my question is, if you said that large assets, whether it's land, cars, there's a process for that, and on the city's website, there's a city surplus statement giving a process. So are you saying that the train is different from that normal process? Although we don't have a policy, we've got one posted on the website. And if we don't have a policy, why is this sale or conversation of sale moving forward when we've not, as Mr., on the prior issue of dark fiber, the question was, can we develop a policy before we move forward? So if we don't have a policy, why are we moving forward tonight with this discussion of a sale of a product that we've not even surplus? And most people don't even know it's for sale.
Yeah, great questions. And I think that the continued discussion will answer those questions for you. I think generally, if there isn't a policy in place, that just means that there's no minimum requirement by the state law or by local law. That doesn't mean that council can't decide that they want to engage in a more involved process, and that's fine. The city has, absent a policy, sold items, you know, for years. And so there's no, I mean, I don't think, I don't want to say that without a policy, we can't sell items, because we certainly have sold, you know, things, yeah. So I-
My thing was more about the continuity, which is consistency. And so what I was saying is, we have a past demonstrated policy. And from what I am hoping you can explain is why this is different, why this is now. And given the large assets, land, cars, whatever, we have a process, but this is different, and I'm trying to figure out why. And I'm trying to figure out why.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess what, what we're trying to convey here is that I don't think that this is different. Um, so first of all, you know, we, like I said, there are two ways. And I went back and met with both the finance director and I met with, um, the city staff member who deals with surplusing assets. And there are two ways that the city sells surplus assets. One is on the surplus website, and the other is through direct council action. Um, so, so we're saying, you know, the surplus, uh, website, you know, if council would like to, the train could be put up for sale on that website. Um, the, the challenge with that is, and, and the point I was just getting to here at the bottom, one, that website won't be able to really effectively vet the purchaser to make sure that they comply with in terms of the donation. And two, those asset sales don't happen in the public. I mean, they, they happen on a public website. But by council taking action on an, on a, on an asset, there's more transparency. The public has the opportunity to speak and participate.
Absolutely.
Yeah, so, so my, so my recommendation, just in terms of, you know, the mechanics of an actual sale, is that in the interest of transparency and making sure that everybody gets an opportunity to have a say about any potential purchase, um, would be that council would do that. And, and there certainly is precedent for having done that in the past. Um, we did that last year with an, a piece of equipment that was owned by the wastewater treatment plant. Because it was a utility asset, a public hearing was required. We held that hearing. Council executed the purchase and sale agreement after that. Um, so, so I think we are being consistent, but I think that having this go to council um, provides that increased visibility for the public because of the connection to this particular asset.
Totally agree with you on that. I was just trying to make sure that the same process that we've used in the past is consistently moved forward. That's the challenge, I think, here in this particular case. Because maybe I'm missing part of it, but there are processes that have not gone through, I think, the openness of discussion for the public. And, uh, you know, not that we've tried to do anything offhandedly, but the point that I'm making is, we've consistently, first surplus, second advertised. And if we don't have any rules by the city on this, the county does. And just out of trying to understand, I consulted with the, um, municipal research as well as the county's office. And so all of them have a process that they go through. My concern is, we usurped this process this time, and I just struggle with trying to make sure that doesn't happen. So we have the appearance of fairness, that we go through process and give everyone a chance, and we honor the family's wishes. That's all I'm suggesting.
Yeah, I thi- I think it's a really great point, and I think it's really an important consideration to keep in mind as we, as we have this discussion. So I think maybe you'll see on the next slide or two that, that maybe what, what staff is recommending for a process might address your concerns. Um, one thing I will say is, the county processes for surplusing assets um, don't apply to the city because the city and the county are governed by different statutory requirements. Um, so, you, you raise a good point, though, that the asset hasn't been de- declared a surplus yet. So what staff is recommending that council think about for a process. And again, you know, it is not my intention to, um, tell, uh, council that you have to sell this asset or not, but just to make sure that you understand what the minimum requirements are and what the process options are. Um, so first of all, I think council, uh, should determine whether it wants to retain the train and establish a static display, or sell the train to a party who meets the criteria of the 2019 MOA. Step two, if council decides that they do wanna sell the train, Mr. Young, I think you're absolutely right, that that asset has to be declared a surplus. Um, step three, council should make a determination about whether they want the train to be sold on a public auction site or through council action. And again, staff is recommending direct council action because of the transparency and ability to vet, um, potential purchasers', uh, ability to operate the train. And then step four, if, uh, council decides to do that, um, you can then direct staff to prepare a purchase and sale agreement for the train, provided that any potential purchaser is provide, is offering fair market value for that asset. Um, and then, and then any purchase and sale agreement, of course, would come back to council. Um, what you'll notice is not required here, and this is from state law. Um, eh, again, there is no requirement for a public hearing on this, on this, um, asset. And there's no requirement that we solicit multiple bids to sell it. Council could decide that they want to do, eh, 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 you know, eh, additional procedures. Um, but, but it, we just wanted to make sure that council understood what the requirements are and where they end. So really, the question before council tonight, um, only council has the authority to make a decision on the city's behalf on any offer to purchase the train. Um, there is currently only the one offer on the table, which requires some sort of a decision because it, it expires on September tenth. Um, staff in this case felt like it was important to bring this decision to council because no action is a decision on the offer. So the options available to council at this point, and, and staff is not making any recommendation. This is really your discussion and your asset. But just to, just to kind of lay out the options. Option one, council could decide to accept the offer that Mr. Iwin has proposed, which would require directing staff to prep up a resolution declaring the train to be surplus, and directing staff to work with the buyer on a purchase and sale agreement. Option two, council could reject the offer. Um, that could happen in one of two ways. Um, one, by taking no action. If council decides not to respond to the offer, that is, um, by law, a, a rejection offer will lap. Um, or council could direct staff to prepare a letter rejecting Mr. Iwin's offer. Option three, council can say, you know, we need some more time to, to consider other proposals or look at this issue more. So you could request an extension of time on Mr. Iwin's offer to, to buy a, additional time to work through the questions here. Um, and that would look like directing staff to request more time. Um, and, and, you know, just, just to make sure I'm doing my job here and fully advising council, um, there, there, there's no guarantee that that request will be granted. Um, if it is, then, then staff would work with Mr. Iwin to develop an, an, a sixth addendum to the, uh, the purchase offer to extend the time. If it's not granted, then, then that would be, uh, essentially rejection of the offer, and, and that offer would go away. Um, council may, but is not required to take action on any other proposals related to the train at this time. Um, but we felt like it was important to make sure that, um, the council knows that there's this deadline of Thursday, and, and staff is legally not in a, really a position to be able to, you know, to decide the outcome of that. So I know that's a, that's a, that's a big ask, and I know that there are lots of people who wanna share information with you tonight. Um, so I will close my remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions. And I'll stay on the meeting throughout the discussion if there are other questions later on.
Mayor Gear?
Mr. Young?
Ms. Swet- this question is from Ms. Swetnam in particular. Um, to be clear, maybe I'm missing something. The train was not for sale when we received an offer for it, correct?
Correct.
And that, in that, it was an unsolicited offer, however kind of offer, it was an unsolicited offer.
Correct.
So, and that we have not surplus this train, just to make any decisions about whether, what we wanted to do with it. But then also, what we've done is that we've, um, somehow brought it forward for an actionable item. Did we ever advertise it?
No.
I mean, just to solicit to see what the value is? Do we have a personal, a professional appraisal done on its value?
Uh, I don't believe so. Maybe Mr. Lunsford can speak to that for you.
I've, I've not seen it. And so just what I did in this process was I contacted, um, professional organizations. And I think you'll see in your packet, one from an appraiser indicating to the city that it's in its best interest to, um, it's from appraisal link at the top, to basically do that part of the due diligence, such that we're maximizing value for the city. Now, in this, that we're making a decis- trying, it seems that we may be about to make a decision on a surplus that was never surplus, on a process that we've never found out whether anybody else is interested, and we could vet them. And then now what we're trying to do is move forward. The challenge is, we don't know the value, and we're about to make a move, which, in my opinion, brings to mind the question of due process. Just like we said, you've done that on everything else. We've done it, the city. Um, the county commissioner has bought trucks himself from the city through a process. So this seems to be aberrant from that. And secondly, it's the appearance of fairness. We wanna make sure that the city governs itself. It has really worked incredibly hard to make sure that the process is there and that the public is aware. This skirts just a little bit for me. And thirdly, if we don't know the value of an asset that we are about to commit some type of sale that we've never really authorized, that means that possibly we're not maximizing the resources and capitalizing on fair market brat value, which would be a gifting of public assets. And the only reason I can bring this up and believe I can speak with authority on it is that I've served as a deputy chairman of the Property Tax Commission for the entire state of North Carolina for many years. We adjudicated both personal and business property in a billion dollars a year on issues just like this. I served on the Board of Equalization and Review for Skagit County, and we review these things. So it's incredibly important for fairness that the city does due process. And even if it is, it has to be transparent. Right now, I feel we have a rushed situation. We've not asked to find out if there are loving people out here. And just from our own personal review, I've contacted other cities such as Wanachi and others, and they said we would be a fool to let the train go without due process. I'm just saying, let's look at it. There are, we don't have to put it all on the website. We can have, put it out there, and then scrutinize who gets the train, if we decide that's what we wanna do. But there's a local group who I think has been doing a great job and deserve an opportunity. So what's the rush? That's all I can-
And Mr. Walters?
Uh, I would ask the city attorney to back up a couple of slides. She laid out a five-step conceptual decision-making framework on one of those slides. And I would propose as a path forward that we, as a council, adopt that framework to guide our discussion tonight. Um, sort of sense through the ether here, some discomfort at continuing this line of argument. What I'd like to do instead is proceed a little bit more methodically. If we decide we want to establish a static display, or if we decide in the alternative we wanna sell the train, then we can proceed with a process argument.
Mayor Gear?
Ms. Cleland?
Yeah, I, I would agree with Mr. Walters, um, you know, and, um, Mr. Young too. But to, to push back a little with, from, with you, Mr. Young, I really believe the purpose of the bringing this forward to council this evening is so that we can have a transparent conversation. Because it's been, it's been something that's been reported on in the paper. It's been something that's come through, um, obviously, the advisory, uh, board through the museum. It's been discussed within committee, uh, and fortunately, we now have a museum committee, so we can be act as an advisory group, or as a, as a, um, discussion chamber before things come to council. But I, I, I really, really think that, you know, this is why we're having the discussion, is so that, um, we can discuss that, this proposal that came to us unsolicited, so that we can make sure that the public is able to make comments, and that they can be fully, um, educated and about the, the background, the history with, and the, the process for any sale of the train. So, so I, I feel like sometimes it, when I'm listening to you, it seems like we're jumping ahead, that we've already made a decision. And I really, really, really don't feel that the council has already made a dec- decision, but that we really need to have this discussion in the public realm so that we can then have more people get involved and, and, and share their viewpoint.
I totally agree with you, Ms. Cleland McGrath. I think, um, this, having a transparent process, I think, is very important. And I agree that we need to, we can make some decisions. I guess my only trepidation is that, you know, quite honestly, this is our first discussion. This, we've, there've been an overview, but not from the standpoint that council decided that we were going to sell an item. Even in Mrs. Swetnam's, um, proposal, she was careful with language, which I appreciate, Ms. Swetnam. But language in this case, as Mr. Walters would attest to, is everything. And in this case, what we are talking about is to selling the train to either retain it, sell it to Mr. Iwin, or keep it. And that's been part of the discussion. I know we're trying to honor the family's wishes, but even in looking at the contract that was initially signed in 2012, it makes explicitly clear. And I do believe the family can get what it needs if it allows this process to be discussed, allow the public, which is really the owners of this asset on behalf of the city. And I'm just not sure that the public has had their say. Many didn't understand that this is what this is about. So what I'm saying is, slowing this process down, not deciding what we're gonna do, yes. Have a public discussion, just like we have on anything else that's contentious. This is contentious. And we wanna make sure that we're not only following the rules of appearance of fairness, but we wanna make sure that we've done our due diligence to make sure that we're getting true value and a good home, wherever that may be. And that's not what I think this process is doing right now. So I wanna make sure that takes place. So, forgive me.
Madam Mayor, can I add something? Thank you. Um, yeah, Mr. Young, I, I appreciate your comments. And I, and I think we're all rowing in the same direction. I think staff bringing this issue to council tonight is looking for guidance from you all because we're not in a position to be able to make these decisions for the city. So, um, you know, if council wants to have a, an elongated process or, or, you know, do some due diligence on value, that's great. Please, please direct staff what that should look like. Um, we, you know, unfortunately, we have this issue of the Iwin offer. And, and, you know, maybe the best option is to ask for more time if council wants to have a little more process. And, and we're happy to, to make that happen. Um, you know, we're working with not a lot of requirements from state and local law. So, so we are, we are, um, welcoming feedback and guidance about what process council would like to continue this discussion and, and whether it even moves forward to a sale or not. So, so thanks for those points.
Just one question for you here. Go ahead, Mr. Walters.
Okay, Mr. Walters, and I'm gonna speak, and then Mr. Young, and then we're gonna go to the public. Mr. Walters?
Uh, I have something to say, following my own advice that we follow the five-step process. But before that, I wanted to ask the simple question of, is there anyone else scheduled to present tonight? Do we have presentations from any local groups or from Mr. Iwin?
Yes, we do.
Okay. Well, then I, I would like us to, to skip over the preliminaries and, and get to that. And then circle back and have a discussion.
Well, we had laid out to begin with. So, Mr. Young, do you have one final comment? Because we're gonna move forward at this point.
I absolutely understand. I just wanna make sure that what we're suggesting is that once the presentations are done, council will come forward, each of us, and have this discussion in public view. Is that correct?
That was, that was always our intention this evening.
All right. I just wanted to make sure. I know it is, but I wanna make sure we follow the process.
That's all. Okay.
All right, thank you.
All right, you're very welcome. So with no further ado, um, we have eleven attendees. And Mr. Iwin, I will call on you first. I don't know if you have a formal presentation, but, um, we'd love to hear your comments this evening. Yes, go, go ahead.
Okay, there we go.
There you are. Welcome, Mr. Iwin.
Uh, thank you, Mayor Gear and council. Um, I do not have a formal presentation tonight. I was attending just to, uh, be here available for questions.
All right.
To support Hayden Thompson. I, uh- I, uh, will address, um, one thing that has come to mind since my previous, uh, presentation. And that was a question directed by Mr. Young. And I believe you asked Mr. Young if, um, Ann Thompson had given permission and, uh, had, um, approved my proposal. And at the time, I was hesitant to speak on behalf of the family. But, um, through several conversations, I had been assured that I indeed do have the authority to speak on their behalf and to recount the conversation had with Ann Thompson. And I can report, uh, with full transparency that at the table, sitting with Mrs. Thompson, um, she asked me to save the train. Uh, so, yes, I do, um, I can confirm that she did give full approval for, um, my proposal, um, understanding the complications that ensued since then. Um, I would just, uh, again, thank the council for considering my proposal, for, um, taking action to, to hear all the opinions involved. Um, I know Hayden Thompson is here, and I believe he would love the chance, an opportunity, to review the letters drafted by the family and by Ann, uh, that he was unable to present in person due to, uh, the national COVID crisis, so.
All right.
And I will just say thank you again for, uh, the opportunity to be before you. And if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Can you remind us when you came to council and did your original presentation? What month that was?
Uh, that was January of 2020.
All right, thank you. Um, so yes, I will move on to, um, to Mr. Thompson.
I have a question for Mr. Ewen.
All right.
Yes, Mr. Young.
Okay, because I think he allowed questions, so I wanted to make sure. Mr. Ewen, you said that you spoke with Ms. Thompson, and she wanted you to save the train. What did she mean by "save the train"? Did she feel that it, did it need saving? I'm not sure the contextual understanding that she was saying that to you.
Uh, yes. Mrs. Thompson at the time expressed to me that, um, at the time of Mr. Thompson's death, he did not want the train to go to Anacortes, because it was his impression that nobody in the city would be able to care for it in the way that he had done and he required of his creation. Uh, she explained to me though how it was moved to the Georgetown steam plant and kept there, and then due to extenuating circumstances, needed a second home. At that point, she decided to have it relocated to its original car barn, which made sense. It was a place of safety for it to be stored. And in doing so, came to an agreement with the Anacortes City Museum. Since that date in 2012, she did not feel that Anacortes as a community had given, um, the respect to the equipment, and quite frankly, the piece of art that Thomas's creation is, and was very disappointed in the lack of progress made. Also very disappointed that her original, um, donor intent of establishing a static display was disregarded with previous attempts to get the op, the railroad operational without consulting the Thompson family. I think that needs to be known that, you know, nobody thought to start with Ann and get her approval for that. It was just a decision made arbitrarily against the original donor intent. Her fear was that vandals could break into the shed, the shed could catch on fire, that water could get into the shed, that the, the locomotive could experience disrepair the longer it sat there, and it was heartbreaking to her. She sat and recounted several stories of the intricacies of Thomas's, Thomas building the train, and the stories, and we, we shared so many laughs and, and smiles over his process. Um, and so, yes, she, she felt that the train needed to be saved.
Got it. Mr. Ewen, let me ask you one further question on that. Um, are you, was Ms. Thompson aware that the local train group was the one to, was the group to go down to Seattle and actually at their own expense, save the train for her? And as a result, they spent money, bought the bell. And I'm looking now at a financial report from the Anacortes Museum Foundation, and I see that in 2017, they had allocated $50,000 for the train building. I mean, was she aware of that, to your knowledge?
Uh, yes, she was aware of all action taken, because mostly affected by the fact that she was not consulted on the steam ups. Um, I think to clarify, I don't believe that the, the group that you're speaking of is all original members that helped with the transportation. Um, there are several different individuals, and Hayden Thompson can speak to that as he was there with his brother Bradford and Ann at the time.
Yeah. I was just trying to point to the fact, to find out if Ms. Thompson was aware that it was really the local train group, in a group of them, Barbara, um, Tom, um, de- just so many. There, I'm sure that'd be in the presentation that's going to come forward, that drove down when there was no other choice, and they, at their own time and expense, went to pick up the train and recertified it once it got back here, lovingly took care of it. And then from what I understand from the train group, some city processed, or they were notified that the city, because of insurance, they could no longer care for it. I, I'm sure they'll discuss it, but I just wanted to make sure that the Thompson family was aware of that.
Uh, yes, Mrs. Thompson was aware of that. And I would ask you, Mr. Young, if you're aware that the original donor intent was not to operate the train at all. So in fact, that group's action to do so violated Mrs. Thompson's wishes, which has led to her extreme disappointment, if I may, in saying that.
Uh, no, just one more point, Mayor Gear. Um, quite honestly, uh, all they did was go and get the train, I understand, at her request. And so that would not be a violation, Mr. Ewen. Thank you, Mayor Gear.
Uh, my point just being that the operation after the transportation was in violation. The, uh, transportation was, yes, requested by the Thompson family, indeed.
Thank you, Mr. Iwin. Um, I'm going to move on then and give Mr. Um, Hayden Thompson an opportunity to speak. Welcome.
Hello?
Hello, welcome.
Hello, thank you, thank you so much. I, I appreciate the opportunity that council is letting, um, me speak on behalf of the Thompson family, and especially on behalf of my mother. This is something I want to say is very, very important to her and our family. Uh, it's something that she talks, uh, very frequently, almost every single week with me on the phone, trying to find out what the latest update is. And I just really want to be clear, um, I want to read these two letters, one from the Thompson family and one from my mom. And, uh, and I just want to clarify one, one thing here before I start. And that was said that the purpose of the MOA, uh, was to sell the train. It was like something that we had, uh, said that, yes, we want to sell the train. And to be perfectly clear, we, when we met Brett Iwin, we said, oh, this is what we want to do. He is just this incredible person, and I want to talk more about him later. But then it was told to us that the process...
Okay, we've, we've lost the connection. Matt, can you get Mr. Thompson reconnected? Give him a couple moments.
Hello?
Hello, are you there, Mr. Thompson?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yeah, we can now. You need to back up a little bit, and...
So where did you lose me?
Um, (laugh) tell me where you are right now. What, what are you talk-
I, I wanted to, um, talk about, about the MOA.
Yes, that's where you were.
I want to start before I read the two letters that the Thompson, that we as the Thompson family have put together, and also my mother. Um, and that is about the MOA to clear, to declare...
Okay, he's gone again.
Mr. Thompson? You might be in a bad reception area in your house. Uh, we keep dropping you.
Okay, hang on, we're going to try to move inside.
All right, okay. Challenges of, um, remote meetings.
Is this, is this better?
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay.
Okay, back to the MOA.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Hi.
Um, what I, what I want to talk about before I read the two letters about the Thompson family, uh, I wanted to address really quick about the MOA that was signed. Uh, we are not attorneys, we are not, um, experts in the field of law. When we met Brett Iwin, he was someone that we, that this is what my mother and the family wanted to do more than anything, especially after waiting eight years. Um, I know Mr. Young was talking about the slowing down the process again, and I don't know how much slower we can actually make it after eight years of waiting. And, um, when we did the MOA, we want to be completely clear that that MOA was told to us that we had to do that as a process to sell the train to Brett Iwin. And suddenly, after we signed it, and my mother signed it, it's like, oh, jeez, okay, we can sell the train to just about anybody we want now. And that was never our intent. And what the law says or the process says, I would think that intent is important. Um, now, can everybody still hear me?
Yes, very clearly.
I would like to read, this was a letter that we drafted, uh, and as we, in response to the discussion regarding my father's train, which took place in Anacortes City Council meeting on Monday, March 9th, 2020. Um, again, my name's Hayden Thompson, and I'm one of Thomas's and Ann's sons. I live right here in Snohomish County. And, uh, it's my intention to, today, to clarify, as the son of Ann Thompson, the original donor, Ann Thomas C. Thompson, the original builder and creator of the Anacortes Railway, our family's desire for the future of the train stored there in Anacortes. I want to elaborate on the family's connection to the area and how that influenced the name of the railway, but in fact, that the locomotive, the cars, the track, the structure, all the maintenance and upkeep were privately funded and built by my father and our family, 100%. Um, the Thompson family, I want to say this clear, will not be receiving any financial gains, not a nickel, not a cent, not a penny, from the rewards from the proposed sale of this train, which was built by my father. Our family's only wishes to see the train run again and inspire and delight the future generations of the awesome power and beauty of steam railways that my father saw and so loved. The train stored in this current building with a proposed window cut in one wall as a static exhibit, in our opinion, offers little inspiration. We have spoken to Brett Iwin numerous times, have met with him, have seen his proposal that he has also given to you. We have seen the restored, uh, restoration projects that Brett has completed, and have noted that the craftsmanship and artistry that he possesses very much mirrors our father's skills. We believe Brett Iwin and his family not only have the financing, but also the same vision, love, and passion for the railroad's steam power that our father had. We believe Brett to be not just a talker and a dreamer, but an actual doer. We saw in Brett someone who could make our father's dreams come back to life. And it's for that reason we signed the MOA that Brett Lunsford had provided you on December 10th, 2019. We want to be very clear again that the MOA submitted was signed by my mother, Ann Thompson, was solely for the intent of moving forward with this sale to Brett Iwin only. It was never our intent with the MOA to open our father's train to everybody or anybody who wants to buy it or has another proposal for its use. Much speculation and assumptions have developed around our father's wishes for the train since passing in 1999.
Mayor Gear, can I ask, Mr.?
True vision and wish for the railroad to be cared for and maintained and operated in the ways that were so important to him. We believe Brett and his family to be capable of reading our father's criteria and fully support the removal from its original operating location. Our father would not be opposed to the train operating in Anacortes with the care and intention that the Iwin's pledge to provide. In fact, we feel he would be delighted to see someone with his same vision and values own to operate the train. In an article published in 1961, our father outlined his plans for the railroad that would along, run along an abandoned railroad line in western Anacortes, serving the ferry terminal and Wasario Beach. Without permits, land, or even locomotive, my father drafted plans and concepts. His ideas was met with much resistance and many questioned his qualifications, much like some have questioned the proposals that Brett Iwin has developed and has so passionately presented to you. At the time of the donation, the museum staff assured my mother that adequate housing would be constructed for the safe storage and display of the locomotive and the three cars. After eight years, we feel that the original promise has not been fulfilled. Although it is worth noting that current staff member Brett Lunsford has been extremely sensitive to our wishes while managing the opinions of the committee. However, in following the cyclical process of the last eight years, along with the lack of specific care required for this extraordinary railway equipment, we feel it necessary to re-involve ourselves in the process and evaluate other options. We understand the difficulties involved in this adventure and the timeline that may be required, but also recognize the same drive and spirit that once fueled our father's passion behind the motivation of Brett's vision. Our desire to have, to have the city of Anacortes accept Brett's purchase offer and fully transfer ownership from the city with a portion of the proceeds to be used to memorialize our father and his contributions within Anacortes. We do not approve of other actions or efforts to operate the train within the city of Anacortes, and no longer wish to see it as a static exhibit there. It is our family's understanding and intent that the MOA dated December 10th, 2019, granted the city permission specifically to sell the train to Brett. We very much appreciate Anacortes City Council's interest and concern in losing the railway, but we urge the mayor and city council to respect our revised wishes and provide this statement from the original donor, Ann Thompson, and our family as further clarification of our collective agreement to support Brett Iwin. Uh, inhering some of the desires from the last city council meeting to retain the option of the train's return should it be inoperable under Brett's ownership, we offered this suggestion. The city of Anacortes retains first right of refusal in the event the train be retired from operation and transfer of the ownership desired. Our family, along with Brett Iwin, feel this allows for the necessary investment for operating and restoring the train, and to ensure the train's place in Anacortes history should that time come again. And I would like to read another very short letter specifically from my mother. Dear City of Anacortes, I am writing in response to the discussion regarding the Thomas C. Thompson Jr. train, which took place at the city council meeting on Monday, March 9th, 2020. It is my intent to clarify, as the original donor, the request that the city of Anacortes transfer ownership of the Anacortes Railway equipment to Brett Iwin. It was my understanding that by signing the memorandum of understanding dated December 10th, 2019, I was given permission for this transaction, specifically as it pertains to the proposal submitted by Brett Iwin in July 2019. I wish to see complete transfer of ownership without stipulation, and a portion of the proceeds of the sales used to memorialize my late husband, Thomas C. Thompson Jr. in a city museum display. I do not wish any of the group to operate the train, and no longer support a static display of the train in Anacortes. I do not believe the train has been cared for, or fundraising process has been made as it was originally assured would happen when first agreeing to the donation on June 21st, 2012. I ask the city to respect my decision and execute a contract for transfer of ownership in a timely manner. Signed, Ann Thompson.
Thank you, Hayden. Is there anything else you'd like to say to the council this evening?
I would be happy to answer any other questions, but, um, one of the things I saw, and I realize that there's a process that has to be followed, but, uh, it seems like, it seems like some of the discussion is just about trying to see how much money can we get for this? And it's... They're speaking about something that's very passionate to our family, and you just want to make some money, and it's hurtful to my family, to my mother. What I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Thompson. At this time, who else, uh, we have other attendees. If you would raise your hand, I will call on you one by one. Um, or, if that's, actually, I, I correct myself. That was Mr. Iwin's presentation. So now we go to the Anacortes Railroad Group's... So now we go to the Anacortes Railroad Group's proposal, and after that, I will go to the individuals that are attending to get any um, further public comment. So at this time, um, I believe Dave Sims is presenting for the Anacortes Railroad Group.
Mayor Gear.
Uh, Mr. Young?
Yes, I, I have a question for Mr. Thompson.
Can we, can we, could, could we wait till we get this next proposal, or do you need it right now?
Well, I was thinking that, you know, because he just made the points that he did, and I truly understand the emotion and passion. And, you know, he's a good son. I just wanted to ask a question about, he says that they only want the train to run again. And that, um, you know, so I was just trying to hear if, I can wait. I'll just go ahead and wait. But though, though, I wanted Mr. Thompson to know and the Thompson family that I truly hear them.
Oh, thank you, Mr. Young. So, Mr. Sims, um, Matt, can you help uh, set up our new presenter?
Think I've got it. Can you hear me, Lori?
Yes, welcome. Good to see you.
Yes, well, um, yeah, thanks for having me. This is gonna be a fun night, I can tell. So, uh, you know, I just want to say, um, you know, thank you and uh, the council for allowing me to time present, you know, where we're going with the uh, progress we've made with the Anacortes Railroad Group, you know. Fight the uh, limitations that we've had because of COVID and uh, the related foundation that we believe exceed the city's support to reestablish the uh, Anacortes Railway and operate the train in celebration of Tommy's memory. Uh, later in the presentation, I'll share the extent of our work and the city's role. Um, for those who uh, don't know me, my name's Dave Sims. I've been involved in the Anacortes community for uh, multiple projects and groups. I own Sebo's, uh, own and operated Sebo's Hardware from nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand sixteen. When I sold my business to the Henry family, I retained my ownership and created Cabinet, ten fourteen Eleventh Street. Uh, I'm a charter member of the Anac- I'll say for that one. Charter member of the Padago Island Rotary Club, uh, formed in nineteen ninety-six. I'm past president, and I'm currently serving my second term as the uh, treasurer. I knew Tommy Thompson. Back when I had my hardware store, he would come in my store, buy things, we would have discussions. So, um, you know, I've got some history in this thing too. Um, so, um, I'll explain how I got involved with this here in a little bit. I've got a slideshow. I hope that I can share this. Let me see. This word, nope. Matt, 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 help me out here.
Yeah.
So if you go to the bottom, there's share screen. You can click on that. Try in here. Let's try this. Did share screen.
And then a lot.
You see that? Exit. No.
I mean, I put on the chat screen you want to share.
Yeah, I want to go share screen. I'm trying to go here. You got that? Love. This just call in. Well, this ain't gonna help.
Matt, do we have a copy of his presentation?
Hey, we'll try this here. Share.
There you go.
That work?
Yep.
Gotta love a plan when it comes to give. How about that?
Yep.
Yay.
You got you.
You got me. Okay. So, this is for the history. You guys all know most of the history. That's the train down below when Tommy received the thing, and that's the piece of art he made up above on it. Um, that's Tommy, as you know, wood. This is the train, as most of us know, remember it, you know, as it was operating here in Anacortes, okay? I'll go through these quickly. This is what the Anacortes Railway Group, our current board, what we did. So I'm president. We have Mitch Everton from the Padgo Pool and Fitness Center. He's our vice president. Anna Jordan New, serving as secretary. She's the VP at the Bank of the Pacific. Um, been in the community a long time. Steve Wilcoy, our treasurer, he's active with the Anacortes Community Theater and a bunch of things in the community. Tom Thompson, we have listed as an advisor along with uh, Brooks Middleton. Those two were on the previous train group, and Tom Thompson actually went down and retrieved the train and organized getting the train from the steam plant. We also have Richard Curtis. Um, he served, yeah, ex-fire chief, a former fire chief, who uh, serves as our safety guy, so we make sure we're doing everything right. So, they're right, two thousand twelve, Steve Oakley gets a call about getting the Tommy Thompson train from the Seattle City Light Steam Plant. This is a steam plant. This is where the train was stored down below, uh, to the right. They were that flatbed trailer, or truck. Steve Oakley, he's in the uh, salmon shirt there, I'll say. He was the uh, museum director. So, he went and contacted Tom Thompson, who's on the advisory board, and said, hey, what can we do to get this train out of here? Tom Thompson went to Lakeside Industries and talked with Billy Campbell, who was the yard manager there. Billy Campbell put a team together with Lloyd Watson from Tonsky Groundworks, Harold Lupien from uh, Lakeside, and uh, Tom Thompson. These guys go down to Seattle on a Sunday afternoon, start at three o'clock, and they finally get down there, and they're building this track. That's Tom Thompson there in the blue on the right. So, this isn't just an easy process to build the track. They have to build it up to that flatbed truck that you saw previously. This track is laid, they have to weld. I mean, this is an involving task. They bring this thing up here, put these two by fours on, take each car, and they have to yard it up onto this flatbed. Then the thing, flatbed, has to go to a trailer. They could not get trucks and trailers down to where it was because of uh, the uh, layout of the steam plant. So everything had to be loaded, unloaded, loaded again. These guys, like I say, started it through and uh, got back to the Anacortes at midnight. This was the train being loaded onto the, onto the uh, truck. Truck barely held it, and they got it to this lowboy trailer, that Lakeside Industries furnished. This is, this was a week before the Fourth of July parade. So, the truck and everything stays on the trailers. This thing is decorated red, white, and blue. And they haul these things through the city of Anacortes. It's the star of the uh, Fourth of July parade in two thousand twelve. So this goes through. I like this slide. If you look to the left, there's a guy with his white shoe on that rail. You just want to go slap the guy. So then they go through and uh, this is it. Billy Campbell still has this banner from when he went through to get it. This is the train after the parade, sat on this lowboy trailer. Dakota Creek came over with their volunteer help and uh, forklift, lifted all these cars, put them on this thing, and reversed the process of what the guys in Seattle did. So these things get pushed back into the barn, like they're saying, and um, there they go. So, um, so in two thousand twelve, this is the letter that the city of Anacortes sent to the Thompson family, thanking them for the donation and transferring complete ownership to the city of Anacortes by way of donation. The city also at the time paid four thousand dollars for a coliopy to the Thompson family that they wanted to sell to the city. This is the coliopy that was in the parade also. They have this on the same trailer as the uh, locomotive. The city then, in October, Steve Oakley sent this letter to the Thompson family, thanking them for their donation and putting the value of the thing at forty thousand dollars. So, um, tax deduction is what this would be. So then, fast forward, two thousand fifteen is when Brooks Middleton and a gentleman named Pear Gripp Keppren are doing work for the uh, city of Anacortes, uh, for some architecting, and they rediscover the train that is sitting into uh, in the railway station. So, they go through and explore what it would take to get this thing going, and they form a group with five guys. One of them is, well, Tom Thompson, he's still involved in the thing, even after he went to get the train. Uh, Pear, Brooks, and then a guy named Ryan Handel. Ryan Handel, you'll hear about later, he's very involved in the train. Um, and knew Tommy when he was younger. So they go through and they develop a route. This is, in conjunction with the port and the city, they get this route from Fort Street up to Market Street where the Ucressa is. They're going through to run this. They put in maintenance on the train. They go and get the boiler recertified through the state. Um, they go and have um, repairs done to some steam valves. Right here, they've got five hundred and thirty-three dollars needed for this thing. And um, trying to move forward on keeping it going. They uh, do their repairs. They uh, do fire it up, and they get a fifty yards of track laid on, in October. They run, and I think, actually, Mayor Gear, I think you had a ride on it. And um, then they're told that it's been a decent assist from any further work on the railroad due to insurance reasons at that point. So the group continues on their plan to have the running railroad. They get the approvals needed to move forward, but then they decide how they have their wishes granted, but they need administration to run the railroad. These are five train guys who know nothing about the marketing or what they're going to do with it. They put out a search for a director, uh, nothing comes up, you know. If uh, I would have heard about the thing then, you know, I'd been on board in two thousand eighteen, and who knows, this thing probably would be running by now. So the train sits in the, the shed again. So now, October of two thousand nineteen, Anacortes American has this story, which announces this possible sale of the train in California. This was two days after my wife and I were talking about the train and wondered what the heck happened with the train. Uh, we were driving through Sky Comish, and they have a thing for free train rides. We thought, boy, gosh, that'd be cool if Anacortes fired up Tommy's train again, because, you know, wherever the thing was, it'd be nice to have it. So this shows up in the newspaper. I contact Mayor Gear a couple hours later, and um, she gets me in touch with Brooks Middleton, the former uh, number one guy in the other group. Talked with him. He gives me this folder, explains all the ins and outs of what's gonna be uh, involved trying to take this thing and go with it. So, I know the MOA is coming up on December second. I also make an appointment with Dan Warra from the Port of Anacortes to discuss the route that they had earlier. Uh, Dan tells me that uh, the port is doing a North Basin project, and there's no way you could go forward in that area with this. We talked about possible route. He suggested, why not run it on the Tommy Thompson Trail? And I thought, wow, that's a good idea. Since then, the uh, MOA from the city comes up for uh, discussion on December second. So this is, as we seen earlier today, this is the MOA that the city voted on, um, on December second. During the presentation, the city attorney, Darcy Flutnam, states that this MOA is not part of any specific transaction, is really a clarification with the Thompson family of what the city's options are with this gift in a way that will maximize the city's honoring of Tommy Thompson. When asked by then city councilman Eric Johnson if there's anything in this that prevents sales of this train to a local nonprofit, she said, not at all. So then, that gets passed, and we start setting out to see what we can do to satisfy the MOA. So, number one, you have to have, demonstrate the skill and knowledge to operate the train. So, we get back in touch with Ryan Handel. Ryan Handel was mentored by Tommy Thompson on steam. He's worked with Tommy. Uh, the family has actually given Ryan some of the molds for the Tommy, for Tommy's train. Um, Ryan was the one who ran the train for Tommy's memorial run in nineteen ninety-nine. Uh, Ryan is very active, you can see to this day, on these uh, steam societies, and he has an interest in operating this train with us. So, Ryan also has developed these manuals. So we have this for, uh, these are from the first week, that's why it says two thousand sixteen. He's got these manuals for this. They're not just little, you know, flip-through manuals. They're involved, as you can see. These are just pages out of them. And then he also developed a testing process. So, nobody's just gonna come out here and play engineer or do anything to the train unless they've been through this process and passed uh, inspection on anything that way. Then we go to the second requirement of MOAs, demonstrate plans for location to run the train in public attraction. So we came up with this plan. This is what we currently want to work with the city to see what we can do. So we're doing it in three phases. Phase one would have a train station depot up by the skate park. We heard the skate park is looking to remodel and maybe rework that area. So we thought, okay, if it's something that we could work with the skate park people or the parks department, lay this thing out so it's beneficial for all, um, do that. Phase two would be to run the train tracks down to T Avenue, but not cross T Avenue. It would give us around a seventeen hundred feet straight shot, run the train through there. Once we get further down the road, we go to phase three, which would extend the route towards V Place. Um, you know, there's only two streets we would have to cross, and you figure out permitting, permitting, would be T Avenue and Thirty. So those are not high-traffic streets. Uh, we just have to work through things with the city to see if this is even an available route. Um, we think it can be done because of the uh, this code here, um, that uh, sets for the Tommy Thompson Trail, that there are uh, things for a franchise tourist railroad. And then, if it's in the area pedestrians, you know, it has to be separated by fence or different grade. I don't think we're planning on putting a fence or anything there. You want to try to beautify the area versus anything else. Um, this is the right of way. This is what it shows. You have fifty foot up by the skate park, forty foot, and then fifty foot down below. The train runs on eighteen-inch rails. You know, you need more clearance, but see what we can work out that way. This is the skate park with the conceptual train depot located in it as it sits now. This depot was designed by Pear Keppen with the previous group in two thousand eighteen. This is their shed design, and then there, the load is the uh, looking down on it for their maintenance facility for the train. Um, specific, uh, requirements three through five, three through five. Um, you know, obviously, we're not gonna alter the train in any way. We'll care for and maintain the train, and we're, you know, not selling it. We couldn't do that. Um, additional progress to the date. So this is where we stand. We've uh, looking at the, talked with Joe Hurren, who is the career uh, um, what am I talking about? Oh, you know, I should actually back up here. Um, let me do this. On this train deal here, we talked with um, Josh Baldwin from Quantum Construction. He spent a considerable amount of time going through this thing to try and figure out uh, bid process and everything like that. So we've come up with price, initial price, five hundred thousand to that, and we figure one point two million to run all three phases of this venture. And those figures have nothing to do with donations. We know, um, as we've gone through this thing, we have a lot of local um, labor and businesses that are just reaching out and asking us about fundraising. We haven't done anything to collect any um, funds at this point, because we don't want, we want to make sure we have our ducks in a row and not have any funding that we'd have to give back, return to anything else. We wouldn't rely on the city for any funding for this project going forward. Nothing we would apply for is um, uh, grants for the two percent hotel motel tax. Um, along with uh, any, you know, we work with the other, wait, speed up. We will not expect any financial resources from the city or project. We require nothing more from city staff and council other than, than any other public or private project inside the city line. We would be self-sufficient. Um, there you go. So, I've had discussions with local service groups that are interested in helping out. Some forum, we haven't progressed because we can't meet with anybody, to really go and put on the uh, dog and pony show to see exactly where we stand with this. Uh, going back with Joe Hurren, I talked with him about creating something at the high school for students to get involved with steam, be part of that as much as they legally possibly could be involved with the steam. Um, and for education purposes. We have a Eagle Scout who's contacted us. He wants to get involved, learn about steam, and see what he can do to help us. We were looking to uh, establish a sustainable board. I talked with Jean Ford Andrich from the Friends of the Forest. She is willing to work with us to build a model that is similar to what they do, so we can have a transitional board and um, funding that carries on, so we don't have just a group that burns out and goes away and this thing quits. This is gonna be sustainable and keep going forward on this thing. The Billy Jones Wildcat Railroad is a railroad in Los Gatos, California, that runs the same type of train, same track. Um, and Tom Thompson has developed a relationship with them over the past couple of years, and they've agreed to help us out on uh, things with the railroad. So we share a common interest on that. Uh, the Swan Town Railroad is a railroad, railroad that was, or is owned by Cal Poly University, founded in Davenport, California. This thing, two weeks ago, burned to the ground in the California fires. So I've heard that- So I've heard that, I called down to their director in California and asked them how they were going through getting values of trains and locomotives because they would be in the insurance process to see where they're at. And shared with him, you know, the Anacortes Railway, um, we looked through that. Um, they don't know if they're going to rebuild or what's going to happen with their railroad. They used it for students to do restoration and it was, uh, actual college thing was donated by a previous graduate. He told me that, uh, I said, you know, we're probably looking a hundred thousand dollars for a locomotive. He said a hundred thousand for the locomotive would be a gift, looking at what he had there. And he gave me the name, I find it, of a company called Lasach Railroad Contractors in Cheyenne, Wyoming. And they do restoration and custom build. And he said, if you want to get an appraisal, these are the guys he would start with or otherwise they can lead you to somebody else. But, uh, I would do that. So, closing, I'll just do this, so let's go. Um, we feel that, uh, we've made substantial progress in establishing a foundation of knowledge, volunteers, design baseline, funding and, funding potential and community support, especially considering the severe COVID nineteen restrictions we've all been working under. Uh, we felt the need to be respectful of the city's priorities during the pandemic and therefore not press our needs to discuss route allocation, permitting, and other city processes and decisions that are needed to make this project a reality. We are ready to have those discussions, execute our design development plan, solicit funding and bring our project into reality for the city, with citizens and future visitors. The deadline imposed by the potential buyer brings us here tonight. First, to ask the city council to retain the Tommy Thompson train and equipment for local operation. And second, to ask the city to work actively with our group, train the Tommy Thompson railway back to life in Anacortes. Um, thank you and I'll answer any questions you may have.
Um, council question. Hey.
Mayor Gear. I have just one question, uh, I have more to add later, but for now. So when the group was looking at restoring or getting the train running back in two thousand twelve and then stopped due to insurance, was that also stopped because it wasn't part of the agreement? Or was it just solely because of the insurance? Or how did you get around that, uh, agreement part of it on it not being a static display?
Um, actually, two thou- two thousand twelve is when they brought it back. The group started in two thousand fifteen. Um, I don't believe, um, well, I can't answer what was, I was not part of that group at that point. So I do not know what requirements were at that point about firing it off and doing work on it. So that I, I can't answer.
Okay, but with the new agreement, it would allow it to be ran?
Correct.
That's all I have for right now.
Okay, well, at this moment, our Mr. Young.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Sim, would you elaborate a little bit on, um, you know, just that a steam engine, just from my research, because I knew this was coming up, how temperamental a steam engine is and the requirement that it sort of be babyed at times? And, and that was, you know, just elaborate a little bit on the care that, uh, the pe- local people put into trying to make sure that it was loved?
Um, well, it's hard one for me to answer, I'm not a steam guy, you know. I'm a businessman, I'm an old carver guy, I'm here, I'm not covered, Anacortes guy. I, I'm here to see about the marketing for, for Anacortes. People love this train, um, this was a going concern. I remember being in my store on weekends, hear the bell go, hear the tut tut of the thing, walking down to the bank and seeing Tommy and Harris Allen was another guy to spin this thing around on the turn, turntable. Um, I would have to get somebody else here, sorry, to answer any questions about the actual scheme of it. I just picked this thing up in October and, and been running with it and I would be lying to you.
Okay, thank you, Dave. So I think at this time, I'd like to get to the rest of the.
Mayor Gear?
Yes.
Hi, thank, um, Mr. Sim, thank you for the presentation. I learned a lot, um, it was very illuminating. One question I have is regarding the previous group that disbanded and wrote the letter saying that they would step aside in order that someone else could come forward and take the train forward into a, a state where it would run again, whether that was here or elsewhere. What is different now materially with this new group? That's different from the group that wasn't able to bring their vision to fruition? How is this group going to be able to overcome those hurdles? Insurance, et cetera, funding, volunteers, a sustainable board? Wha- what is different about this group?
Well, this group. Well, the people we have in this group now are more business administrative people that have connections, know how to do funding, know how to, uh, work with the community more. Those guys were, they did a great job, but they were five train guys. You know, it's basically like five guys getting in the garage on the weekend saying, hey, we got a plan, let's go do this. You know, build the car, but then, you know, where do we run it, you know? So we would be, what we're trying to do is have our group of administration, our core group of the, uh, seven that we have now, but by having Brooks and Tom Thompson on board, um, their connection of what they have. And Ryan, they're the end that's going to run it. You know, I have no desire to learn how to run the train. You know, I'll ride that thing and I don't think any of us in the, of the current seven actually, you know, Brooks can, I'm sure he can run it. But we, we want to see the legacy and everything that we knew of Tommy for going forward. We're not out just to run the train because it's a fundamental thing to us and I had a good experience with my son on it or something like that. Our group can carry it forward because we have connections in the business community and other deals where I think we can do the fundraising and we can set it up to go further than just five guys that turn wrench and no disrespect in that term to those five.
Very good.
Mayor Gear?
Yes, Ms. Cleveland Graff.
Yeah, uh, Mr. Sim, thank you for your presentation. Um, my, my question is kind of continuing with the wrench versus the business group. Um, are you, has there been discussion of who's going to run the train once it's actually built, um, and along the tr- along the Tommy Thompson Trail? Have you kind of game planned out, are they going to be volunteers that run the train? Are they going to be hired, um, expertise? I mean, yes, it's great to fundraise, but you still, I mean, this was a labor of love for Tommy Thompson and, and, I mean, this is what he did all day, every day. And because of his charismatic being, um, he, he encouraged and brought out that joy, right? To have other people volunteer to make this happen. So I, I'm just kind of curious if you've kind of discussed that.
Oh, yeah.
On a high level.
Oh, yeah, we've talked with Ryan about this. And that's why he's got this setup of educational, um, or manuals and things. And Ryan has friends in the, uh, Buckton County Railroad that are willing to come down. We've, there's seen people all around here that are willing to run this train. It's not like we have to go and grow people to run it. There are people here just waiting for us to get approval on this and then, um, they will come. So I'm not worried about that.
So there, so there would be a, essentially a volunteer element to, to this nonprofit that would run pretty, pretty intensively. Because it's a, I would think it's a lot of training and a lot of insurance level, insurance requirements and, um, you know.
Yep.
All of that government, right?
Yeah, we've talked to a couple of insurance agents on this thing. We've got quotes of twenty-five grand a year to satisfy what the city wants for ten million, which they also tell us the city's requirements are higher than other railroads around the country, what they want. So, um, yeah, we're going through these processes now, but, you know, like I say, I picked this thing up probably in January and slowly heard about it in October, been working through this. And when I first talked with Matt Miller about this, I said, hey, what do you know about the train? He told me, look, the only time the council is going to look at this is if you put this whole thing in a box and you bring it to us totally complete, we'll look at it and then it'll be yes or no. And I said, okay, that's fair. But now you've got somebody coming in saying, hey, here's my deadline. My deadline is March twenty-first. Then this deadline, I believe, went to June tenth. Now it's the deadline September tenth. So I can't walk into City Hall and say, by gosh, I want building permit next week too, they dogged it.
Yeah.
So I don't understand this process.
Yeah, I know, I, I understand that. And then my other question just, and it, and this is kind of, might be a little too in the weeds. You know, if you're running it, running it along the Tommy Thompson Trail, right? Where people are riding and cycling and walking and doing all of their activities, have you researched kind of what kind of setbacks are required for safety? Um, with regards to the, the speed of the train and the steam element to it?
Yeah, we've discussed that and quote, I'm told there's only steam element at takeoff so it would not be around the people. There's no steam that is going to be around people. It has to operate at a different grade, it'd be separation. There'll be, we, the top speed is twelve miles an hour, I was told. Um, there's going to be no way there's going to be interaction between pedestrians and the train. So we would have to go out there, survey, see exactly where everything lays out and make sure of that, you know? Um, I won't tell you, if it doesn't fit, it doesn't fit. Uh, we're first ones to agree. If, if, if can't be done, we're not going to just cry and ram this down. You know, we're just trying to put together a proposal based on the information we have. And an MOA that says, hey, you can run the train, you know? We're not out there to hurt the family or do anything like that. We're just proceeding down the steps that were offered us at the beginning, so.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sim. Um, I, I just, I'm, I'm curious, so I, that's kind of why I wanted to ask some more of these questions so I could kind of have it in my head. Um, the one last question was, you know, with the skate park, have you talked to the parks department about this future skate park and that, and that location at all?
Um, I talked with Rachel from the skate park, or from the skateboard shop, you know, just briefly do that and talk about it. Um, just say I've talked to some department that I haven't got answers from.
Okay.
We'll blame it on COVID.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mayor Gear.
Um, who, Mr. Young, is that Mr. Young?
Mr., it was Bruce.
Oh, Bruce, Mr. Google, go ahead.
All right, uh, thank you, Mr. Sim, for the information as well. Um, you mentioned like your conversation with Mr. Miller previously and, and he said, you know, basically put a, it sounds, it sounds like, put a proposal, like box up a proposal that the council can say a yes or a no to. Um, my, my feeling is that's exactly what we got from Mr. Iwan, is a proposal in a box and then, um, the extensions have been because he's been asked to extend it. Um, so my question for you though is what's, what's preventing? Like what are the gaps and how long would it take for your group to essentially bring a comparable proposal in a box that is ready to go? That we could consider because, you know, there's, it's been a six to eight month process already where I was personally hoping that, that we could have that, um, by now. But do you have a sense for what are the gaps or what are the blocks, the blockers from, from having, bringing that forward?
Major thing we need right now is, uh, to get to City Hall, find out if these routes are available, you know? Um, what would be, um, looking to fundraiser, you know, once, we haven't done anything until we, I think the route is a major thing. If we can get the route, then we can go forward, uh, double check all our fundraising, get further, um, uh, precaution involved until we know the route and what it's going to take to put this thing together. Then we can get our estimates together for the train station and move forward on it. You know, I would say you're probably looking six months to a year. You know, again, which I know you don't want to hear, but, you know, this, it's going to be a process.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, uh, the forthrightness.
And, you know, one other thing I'd say is, um, the community may not want it. You might start down this road and you may have twenty-seven people on the line right now that say, you know, Dave's just a fool and get him out of here, you know? And we're ready for that too. It's got to be a total community input on this thing. We're just, we're working the process to see exactly where the community wants to go with it and what we can do with it. So, hope that answers your question.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So at this time, I'd like to hear from anyone else that's attending the meeting tonight. If you have further comments, could you raise your hand and I'll call on you? Um, there's a little icon where you can put your hand up. No one else wants to talk to us? Oh, wait, William Campbell, welcome.
Hello, am I there?
Yes, you are, welcome.
Well, hello. Oh, I'm, uh, I'm Billy Campbell, I'm the guy that, uh, went down and helped drag it out of the steam plant down there. Um, we, uh, we were so excited to get to be a part of this, bringing it back to Anacortes. Uh, I have been waiting for years for something to, to, uh, start, uh, on this process. I, uh, can't believe it's taken this long to finally get to this point. But I hate, I, when we went down there, oh, I, I remember Ann just so excited that we were there bringing the train back home. And, uh, I just, I think that it would be only fair to let everybody in town actually have a voice in this and give Dave a shot. I, I, I just think that it, we haven't really given the train a fair chance yet. If, if we'd have known it was only coming back here to sit in the barn, I don't think you'd have got the group together that you did. Uh, it, it was quite a feat to get that train back here. Uh, that's all I got to say.
Okay. I, I appreciate.
Thanks for listening.
Well, thank you for attending tonight. All right, future, um, you can put up my screen where I can tell if I have other attendees. Okay, was anyone else that's attending tonight like to speak? Raise your hand, I'll call on you. Okay, we've got several of you in the audience. Okay, all right, well, I don't see another hands up. So at this time, I'm going to bring it to council, uh, for discussion tonight. And so, you know, we, we, we need to have a discussion tonight and we have options in front of us, um, this evening. And, um, as Darcy said, we can discuss to accept, discuss to reject, um, discuss to, um, ask for an extension from Mr. Iwin to explore other options for the city. So I open it up to you, council.
Mayor Gear.
Mr. Carter.
Figured I'd get my two cents in there, uh, in the beginning so I don't get lost.
Right, very good.
Uh, putting the first group aside, uh, because my understanding, the way it was working is they were kind of operating against the agreement and I don't see how that was going to work out anyway. So that kind of, I feel like that would have been disbanded, uh, in the first place. This new group and they've only really been able to come together since the, uh, new, or the agreement has been amended. And given the virus, it's kind of set them back a little bit. And, but they have come forward and given us something that they started working on. And I've kind of gone back and forth a little bit on how I felt about this. And with the original intent of the donation and the changing. And I understand where the Thompson family is coming from and their anger and how it hasn't been met to the original intent. But that being said, they did donate it to the city. And me being elected to the city council, I have to give my dedication to the city. The city, from what I can tell so far on different comments of people, emails, uh, people I meet on the street, Facebook, everyone is showing their support and love of the train and wanting to keep it here. So in my position as city council, I have to give that opportunity to the city to at least give them a reasonable time to try to get it done to keep it here. Uh, but, so my understanding is, are we only have two options, right? We either keep the train as a static display or we sell it. So would we be either selling it to one of these two parties?
Flutnam, do you want to clarify that?
Yeah, Mr. Carter, that's a great question. Um, yeah, so the, with the, the twenty twelve donation letter and the twenty nineteen MOA, really the options are for the city to keep the, the train as a static display or to sell it. Um, you know, if there, if there was, uh, I, I think council, you know, may have to make a decision about how they want to answer that question of, of who the train gets sold to. Um, y- y- you know, I think, I think that's part of the, part of the discussion for council today.
Um, y- y- you know, I think- I think that's part of the- part of the discussion for council today. So...
Thank you. And so, with that being said, I mean, I was elected to Anacortes City Council, not a city council in California, so I have to give the first right, or try to support what I see people in Anacortes wanting. And that's keeping it here in Anacortes and giving them time to try to do that.
Thank you, Carter.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, I think the analysis is a little bit more complicated than that. Um, I'm the only elected official that wa- is still around from when the Thompson family offered to donate the train to us back in 2012. And my question to the mayor at that time was, uh, simply, how much was it gonna cost? Uh, what were we going to- what obligations were we going to incur by virtue of this donation? And the answer was, "Oh, not much. It's not gonna cost us anything. We're not gonna have any obligations." And then, the mayor accepted the train, and he did so without a- authority, because under state law, the city council accepts donations, and the city council enters into contracts. So, the mayor, at that time, did not have the authority to enter into this contract with the Thompson family, or accept the donation. But it happened, that what is done is done. Um, that contract, though, the 2012 version, did not allow us to operate the train, and it did pledge that we would care for it, safely store it, and that we would raise funds for a display structure. Now, there was some talk at a couple of meetings later on about, "We're going to create a used vehicle museum on the depot site," which was not thought out, not added to the capital facilities plan, and city council didn't fund it. But at no point did anyone ever mention that we'd signed a contract back in 2012, uh, to accept this train and obligate the city to do things with the train, namely, create that static display. Um, so, I apologize to the family, on behalf of the city, that we didn't do that. Um, but the city council has, in the intervening years, changed our procedures and our city code about how we han- handle donations and how we handle contracts, to fix those problems from reoccurring in the future. Now, since this proposal to purchase the train, the city has properly entered into it, uh, uh, what is essentially an amendment to the 2012 contract. Uh, but it still does not allow us to operate the train. So, I know that there's been a lot of discussion in the community about, you know, the city should run the train. The city should run it out to the ferry landing, you know, the city should do various things. But we don't have the ability to do those things, because not only did we- we sign these contracts twice now, uh, we also need to honor the donor's intent, because it's the right thing to do, and because it affects our ability to get donations in the future. Um, we really can't have, um, the city break its promises, whether they are effective or not. And it is very compelling to me, um, the family's story here, because the community loves this train and has fantastic fond memories of the train. But the family has memories of the labor that went in, and the money that went into producing this thing, all of which was uncompensated, uh, and then donated to this- to this item to the city on the basis of a promise we didn't keep. So, that, to me, really lends, um, it- it compels me to think that we need to take action now that is consistent with what our agreements that we have signed say, and what the family wants. Um, I don't think we have any particular need to sell this train. We don't need the money. Uh, it is not costing us that much just to house it in the shed that it's in. It doesn't take up much space. It takes up far less space, as many people have pointed out, than the giant sternwheeler next door to it. I think a static display of the train could be really cool for the city, and I would love to see a static display of the train here. I do not think, even if we could, that the city is capable of running it. And I completely understand the family's arguments, that you've got to be really good to be able to run this thing. I mean, and you have to be also really committed to this item. Uh, the brass and the velvet and everything in- in this train. Um, it's- it's not like flipping on a switch, and it's not a commodity. It is a one of a kind. So, um, if the family were willing to let us display it in a static display, I think that we could find a solution for that. Um, but if they're not willing to do that, then we need to live up, I think, to our agreements. And that agreement does not require us to sell it, but it does require us, in the alternative, to not operate it and put it in a static display that is worthy of it. So, if- if we are going to choose that option, we need to come up with a real plan for doing that. Um, and I don't believe that there is any real option for running it in Anacortes, even if we were allowed to. Um, I don't think that the Tommy Thompson Trail option really works. I don't think that that's compatible with the- the pedestrian path that's there. I think physically, theoretically, there is enough width, but that is a huge undertaking to accomplish through that industrial area, and it's an industrial area. That's not the spot for it to run. Um, and it wouldn't be a tourist draw, and it wouldn't- it wouldn't be compatible with the surrounding land uses. So, I don't- I- I don't see an option, uh, for running it here. And- and the real option would be to run it around, um, the Cap Santa Marina, but that's not our property, and it's not part of, uh, the Port's North Basin Plan. So, that leads me to the conclusion that we should be seriously considering the sale. And if we don't want to do that, someone should provide us, um, council members who don't want to do that, I think, should provide us an alternative that is consistent with the agreements, which is funding a proper static display.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Young.
Um, with all due respect, I'm going to disagree with Mr. Walters in approach only. My- my colleague, I think that's how they said. Um, at the end of the day, the train group have really put forward a plan, and they've done it in a short period of time. Ultimately, in, uh, June twenty-first, 2012, there was an agreement signed that said, "It is our understanding that you are offering to transfer complete ownership of the Tommy Thompson train, comprised of one engine and three cars, to the city of Anacortes by way of donation." Within that statement alone, legally, it gives the train to the city. Now, if we recognize that, and with all due respect to the family, having a policy of, um, of- of- of dissolution of city-owned asset, it's what we have done with major equipment, land, and everything else that I can think of with the city. What we are attempting to do in this process, in my opinion, it is to usurp that process, because there is a defined process for not only, um, dissolution of city-owned assets, even though we say we don't have one, but we've operated one. And then, even the- this county has got one. So, what I'm saying is, we have a process that we've used. Why is this aberrant? Secondarily to that, the city, in my opinion, in my research, I- I, again, I've called not only the, um, municipal research, I've spoken to the county, I've spoken to the AG's office. I was trying to get, and I've spoken to other cities, to try to figure out how other cities handle unique assets such as this one. And so, the challenge that we have is in deciding who and what this asset goes to. We've not even put it up for sale, so instantly, we're going to have a no-bid process for something that is a valued asset and in need for the city. I struggle with that, because what it does in this example is it bypasses the traditional ways that we've done any of the things that we do by way of city-owned assets. And- and beyond that, the fact that the local train group has put forward a plan of action, they've personally met with donors that are willing to fund it. The question of whether or not they can is a guess. What they've demonstrated is that they're willing, that they're capable, they've recertified the train itself, and they cared for it. So, they've already demonstrated their ability to care for it, not only in getting the bell and the- the- the whistle that comes with it. They went down to get it and lovingly got it restored. So, it's not as if they're haphazard during this process. They've demonstrated many things that I have not been aware that Mr. Iwan has put forward in his plan. And in this, I'm also going to disagree a little bit, in that I've seen the plan that Mr. Iwan has presented to us. Mr. Iwan did not own the land. He did not already have a, um, music- a- a amusement park per- permit. It was conceptual drawings, and they were beautiful. But he's not put forward, in what I've seen and reviewed, the same level of complexity that local train group has done. So, I agree with Jeremy, in that we've not really given this train group the opportunity, and what's our rush? We're not in a rush to sell anything. Uh, this is an approach by someone, an unsolicited offer, that came to buy something that was not surplus, and it's an unsolicited bid. So, why are we bound by that as a council? I don't understand. Are we afraid that we're not going to have other bidders? Well, I reached out to the Western California Train Group, and they said that, uh, gauge cars, three cars, was roughly a hundred and fifty to one hundred and sixty thousand dollars. They, uh, runs it, they do appraisals. I contacted Wanachi and several other cities in the process, and they all felt that the train would be a mistake for us to get rid of. So, what Mr. Sims did in the train group is they deserved an opportunity here locally to see, could they pull it off? And if they can't, okay. But we've not given that. And quite honestly, my question for Mr., uh, Lunsford, Brent Lunsford, is, according to the Museum Foundation's financial reports, for three years, there was fifty thousand dollars allocated to the train building, and that there were never any questions asked, or any dollars asked of city council by the museum for the train. But there was fifty thousand dollars allocated by the foundation that was never used. So, what I'm saying is, it's not that these people have not worked hard to try to preserve the train and put their money up. The city itself said that it could not find a location. Now, Mr. Sims have proven that they are working on it and have great ideas. So, I disagree with you on that process. My issue right now and tonight is, one, the appearance of fairness, two, a gifting of public funds. I don't want us to come awry with that, because if we are going to suggest who can buy it and who can't, and we don't even know, haven't even gotten a formal appraisal, I don't know how close we can ever come to doing just the thing that we don't want to do and appearing to be transparent. That's my view of it.
Thank you, Mr. Young.
Mayor Gere.
Mr. Walters.
Uh, let me just address this process issue then again. Our standard process for disposal of copy machines and police cars is irrelevant to the question of this train. I agree with Mr. Young that it would benefit us to have a written procedure and policy for disposal of various items. However, our practice of putting things on the auction surplus website is not what we ought to do here anyway. So, it- it ought not to be applied to this. Uh, city council retains the right to sell off whatever assets it wants, and in this case, we should be able to determine the process ourselves in this one instance, because this is not a commodity. This is a special item. Um, and we have contracts binding us to follow, um, a particular, not so much a process, but to- to, if we are to sell it, provide it, um, to someone who is qualified to purchase it, per those agreements. Now, so, if our desire is to sell the train, and if we desire more process, then I would suggest that that process should be advertised, that we are surplusing it, solicit proposals, and then decide which ones are qualified, per our agreement. Um, and then, pick the one that has the highest purchase price, um, of those that are qualified. And it should all be consistent with the MOA that we have signed.
And at this point, I'd like to give other council members an opportunity to speak.
Mayor Gere.
Ms. Cleveland McGrath.
So, I have a real problem trying to use the process, um, the surplus process, when it comes to this train, and saying that there is a standard procedure, because this is not a mass-produced item. This is not something that is easily replaced. This is something that is a piece of art. It took blood, sweat, and tears. It took decades before it was even, you know, before any part of the train actually existed, before the velvet was put on, before the tassels were put on, before the tracks were laid. This was a family endeavor, dream, that somehow was able to come to fruition, and was admired and loved for twenty years, right? And I was someone, and I know there's other people on the screen, who wr- who wrote it as kids or as adults, and totally loved it. I have a problem with the id- with some of these issues. The eas- the easy thing to be- to say would- would be, "Let's, uh, listen to our constituents, because there's been a ton of outpouring that they want to save the train." And I- and I am fine. I think we should give them the opportunity, but I also think we have to go back to the fact that the initial acceptance of the train was not necessarily thoroughly thought out, right? If- if- if, in that agreement with Ann Thompson in 2012, we had a responsibility to create that static display, we have failed at doing so, right? We had wonderful volunteers who brought the train back from Seattle. That's fantastic. I think that was a real great feat that happened. We are now in a situation where it's eight years later. Um, we haven't done anything with it. The family's still around. Ann Thompson was there through all of these, all of the years. I'm sure she's ha- had so many conversations, so many late nights discussing these things. And they've- we've come to a- a very unique situation where they- they're disappointed with what the city has done so far. And they're still around to- to voice their opinion and concerns, right? And so, there is some level of importance and- and value to listening to Ms. Hayden Thompson and Ann Thompson and the family's wishes. So, I- I really think that that unfortunately outweighs a lot of, or at- or at least gives a much more weight to that situation that's extremely unique, that is not like the Preston, that is not like other, um, things that we may surplus. This is something that is- is a- is a one of a kind, and that's the reason we also want to keep it in Anacortes, right? That is- that's why it has such fond memories. But- but ultimately, like, the- 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 the family that spent all of the time building it and running it and creating it with help from community members have shared their wishes. Now, I think one of- one of my disappointments is that in November or October, November, when that updated memorandum was done and came before council, I actually watched it twice this afternoon, just because I wanted to understand at what point where did we have some miscommunication, right? And so- so, I think one of the challenges was, that was brought forward, they updated, there was an update of, you know, "Yes, the train could be sold," and with these requirements. Um, and fortunately, what was missing from that, which I- which was mentioned by Hayden, was that this was- should have also included, "It is for this one purchaser," right? That is the only- that is the only, um, entity, Mr. Iwan, that the family wants to see it go to. So, now, if it doesn't go to him, then we need to maybe have another conversation or whatnot. But I- I don't want to, um, discount the love and passion and- and desire to have it stay in our town. and desire to have it stay in our town. And I appreciate Mr. Sim coming because I think he got put on the hot seat to try to answer every question, which he couldn't, and no one could. I mean, this is a huge project, right? This is something that takes a lot of depth of knowledge in a lot of different areas. But I think that we have to really go back to that first question and be really sensitive. Because, you know, this is an indicator to other future possibly donors to our city. And if we don't kind of honor the intent of a gift or an acquisition, then we're not going to be trusted in the future, right? So I think we need more discussion on it, but I just, I really think we have to be sensitive to that. It's easy to get your inbox and see a bunch of supportive letters, and I totally believe that, I would love to see it stay too. But we have to remember intent, right? And we have to do what's right. So I just would like to say that, and I'm sure I'll have more to say. Thank you.
Mayor Geer. Thank you, Ms. Cleveland McGrath. I have very similar sentiments, and you expressed it very well. I actually had a question toward intent, perhaps for Ms. Swetnam. Essentially, could it be interpreted that per our failure to act upon the contract from 2012, we're essentially in breach of contract? Is that a reasonable characterization?
I think that is a reasonable characterization, yes.
And so the remediation for that breach of contract is essentially the MOA where the family brought us a buyer?
That was the intent, was to allow for an alternative to a static display because we hadn't gotten to that point yet. And, you know, to the extent that there was a miscommunication at the council meeting, I apologize for that. I didn't realize that the intent on the part of the family was that that MOA amendment only applied to moving forward with the purchase offer by Mr. Iwan. So, you know, if I did communicate that to council because I was looking at the plain language of the agreement itself, and they've since clarified that, you know, no, we intended that to just allow the purchase by Mr. Iwan. So I apologize both to the family and to council for that, that misunderstanding and miscommunication.
Okay, thank you. And to kind of, I guess, to add to what Ms. Cleveland McGrath said, it pains me that essentially that things have, you know, that we've come to this situation where my feeling is, we did sit in breach of contract and that we should honor the family's wishes via their remediation pact that's been offered. So that's my feeling.
Ms. Walton.
Thank you. I'd like to thank Ms. Cleveland McGrath for covering so many bases so eloquently. I agree with her and also with Mr. McDougall and with Mr. Walters that the city did not honor the terms of the contract into which it entered with the Thompson family. And it is very hard because there is a lot of community support for keeping the train here. I question how realistic that really is ultimately long-term. But even beyond that, I believe it is our duty to honor the wishes of the family as expressed in the contract. And hard as this is, that is the direction I would like to go.
Ms. Swetnam, I have a question. It is almost nine o'clock. We oftentimes don't make a decision like this in one hearing because it's very important. The only reason we have tried to do it tonight is that Mr. Iwan's proposal to us expires on Thursday. Do you have any, Thursday, September tenth, do you have any suggestions for a way to continue this conversation? Or are we at the point where we have to take action tonight?
Well, if Mr. Iwan is still on the meeting, perhaps that's a question for him. Because as of right now, if, you know, we get to Thursday and the proposal expires, the legal effect of that is that the offer's been rejected and it's withdrawn. If Mr. Iwan would be willing to give the city an extension to continue the conversation, that's certainly something that we could work through with him before Thursday if he's available.
This is Mr. Iwan, and thank you for that option. As stated in my first proposal, my deadlines have never been to force decisions or to create an arbitrary pressure. It's just to help foster a process of action. And so if that is what the council is requesting, I can fully support that. I would just request that the council present to me a suggested timeline as opposed to me continuing to just offer up months at a time. So if the council has any advice as to what would be beneficial for this process, then I'd gladly welcome that and consider.
Okay, thank you for that, Mr. Iwan.
Mayor Geer, I have a question for Ms. Swetnam.
Yes, go ahead.
Ms. Swetnam, did the city officially accept an offer?
Uh, no.
Official acceptance? Was that yes or no?
No.
Okay. Now, and if in the city having full ownership of a property, can it select the buyer?
Uh, I think, yes, but it depends, I guess, is the answer to that. Sure.
I mean, because what I'm saying is, could I just say, let's say, one of the exhibits that we currently have, Wally Funk's, I love Wally. And could we, as a city, just decide that we're going to sell Wally Funk's donation to Mr. Ewen as well? Could we just do that? And then what's the difference?
Yeah, okay, so no. And the difference is that Mr. Funk's donation has been added to the museum collection. So there are prohibitions against just selling assets that have been added to the museum collection, but the train has not been. It's owned as an asset in the general fund.
But are there provisions? But I guess what I'm trying to get to that I haven't gotten the answer from you, I'm looking for to try to hear, is the question of, once it became a city-owned asset, because it was donated to the city, correct, in totality?
It was, well, it was donated to the city with conditions.
Right, but the conditions with that ownership would transfer instantly to the city, correct?
The conditions were that it was donated to the city with the expectation that it used it in a particular way. In the same way that when we get donations of restricted funds, that they only be used in a particular way, we have to then use those funds. So that's a clarification. Your general concept that I think you're trying to get at is if the city owns something, can the city then sell it as it sees fit? Well, sure, unless there are additional conditions or restrictions on it. And I think that's the it depends part.
Got it. I was just trying to get to the fact that although there was funds allocated, I would like to ask Mr. Lunsford, did anyone from the museum, in your knowledge, request the city do anything toward preserving the train? Even though the foundation allocated fifty thousand dollars?
Mr. Young, I can answer that. Previous to Mr. Lunsford being the director, Mr. Oakley and I, as Mr. Walter, he referenced this earlier in his comments, we came to the city council in 2015 with a proposal to build a static display for the fire engine. We were thinking of a whole, you know, a whole building because we have a city fire engine, Tommy's train. At that time, it was, I forget the name of the company, it was Marathon's predecessor also had an ambulance. And we were trying to, like a museum, but it wasn't in the capital facilities plan at the time. And we were looking at sixty million dollars in infrastructure work for our roads. So the council very prudently said, no, no, thank you, not at this time. So that is the one time that Mr. Oakley did. He did try to put something together, but because it wasn't in the capital facilities plan, because of lack of resources, that was never taken forward. And I must say, until this process started in the last couple of months, I was unaware of the letter that was signed by Mr. Maxwell. I didn't understand that we were required. I never saw the document. So I feel a bit contrite about that. But, you know, there's a lot of documents here at the city. So, so there was effort previous to Mr. Lunsford. And then since Mr. Lunsford's been here, he's worked really hard with a lot of things.
No, I guess my question was about, my question was more about, was there an official request? And quite honestly, given that it was in 2017 that there were fifty thousand dollars allocated by the foundation for the train itself and the shared, the building itself, we never made a move on it. And I was just wondering, why not? So I guess I get it.
That was the foundation, not the city.
Yeah.
So it is a little after nine.
Mayor Geer.
And Mr. Walters.
When we received the presentation from Mr. Ewen on March ninth, I asked staff to draft at least the outline of an agreement that would ensure that the train actually starts operation within a defined time period, that the major components of his presentation would actually take effect, and that the train would return to Anacortes if its use for his facility was discontinued. And my intent there, as we talked about on March ninth, was that we then have two options in front of us, at least the outline of that agreement, and then also a presentation from the local group that has been working on this. And what I tried to convey at that time was that we didn't need a complete and one-hundred percent proposal from the local group because if it wasn't going to work because we couldn't make the route work or something like that, then we didn't need to build out all the rest of the details around a route that doesn't work. So we've now received that presentation. I think we don't have the outline of that agreement. I would like to have in front of us the text of such an agreement and a resolution to surplus the train so that we can consider something that Mr. Ewen would agree to and that would fulfill our obligations under the MOA. And also just that general principle that, you know, we're going to get what was presented to us, that all of those things will happen. And that we consider that in two weeks or three weeks or whenever.
That was, I was going to suggest that, you know, towards the end of the month. And I think Mr. Iwan is willing to give us that time.
Yeah, I just wanted to mention, thank you, Mr. Walters, for bringing up your request for an outline of an agreement. Mr. Iwan actually did do, did prepare kind of an outline of what an agreement might look like. And staff is happy to work with him to finalize that and bring it back to council along with the resolution to surplus.
And to tag on to that, the point Mr. Young makes about value, I think, is also important because of our constitutional responsibility to avoid gifting of public funds. There should be some evaluation, whether it's an appraisal or not. There should be some evaluation by someone other than the buyer of what the value of the train should be, and that should be documented. There was a whole bunch of discussion on Facebook, at least, prior to this meeting tonight. And there was no document that summarized all of this in the packet. And I think that we would have benefited from that as well.
Sure. We're happy to work on putting all of that together for you.
Okay, so.
One last point.
Yes, Mr. Young.
My trepidation is nothing to do with Mr. Ewen because he really seems to be a wonderful gentleman. And my respect for the family is truly very strong. And I understand their intent now. But where I struggle is, the city, in this action that we're taking, is making a decision for sale for something we have not even surplus, only just now beginning to have a discussion. And we've not even gotten an appraisal of value to determine what it is. Even though we may not be going for value and we're trying to do honor Mr. Thompson, we seem to be side-skirting this appearance of fairness. And in the sense that we don't even know the value and we're not going to do the process that we've already established by doing it, we're running awry of the gifting of public funds, and that's where I struggle. I know I only have one vote on this thing, and I hear it. But we seem to be bypassing this process, and it gives me trouble. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Young. And we will take this up in two or three weeks. We'll get it posted in a few days when we can put it on the agenda. And we will have time for some more, you know, discussion and due process. And I appreciate all of you members of the community that have hung in there tonight. I see all your names hanging there. I wish you were in the council chambers. It's real. Ms. Cleveland.
Can I say one more thing? I'm sorry.
We're going to close, but you're fine, Warren.
Oh, no, 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 it may open a camp worm. So, Ms. Swetnam, will you correct me if I'm wrong? We still, even all of the things that have been said, we still have the option while honoring the two different documents that the Thompson family has signed, that if a group came forward and wanted to do a static display and had a plan for that, is that something that should be brought forward at least? I just, I think that should be out there. And can you tell me if that's an option, or is that not?
Yeah, I think that's a tough question to answer. If we look at the 2012 agreement letter and the 2019 MOA, I think the option is for either the city to have the train as a static display or a third party to purchase it and make it operational. So I think if we want the train to stay as a static display, it probably needs to stay in city ownership or we need to clarify that point with the Thompson family. And, you know, I mean, that might be a subsequent amendment to the MOA.
So that's something that I would like a little bit more clarification on before our next meeting.
Happy to do that.
All right. Well, thank you, everyone. Wonderful conversation. Thank you to the public. Thank you to the Thompson family. Thank you, Mr. Iwan. Thank you to Dave Sim. Great presentation. We live in a great community, and we all care deeply. And I appreciate every one of you and all your testimony tonight. So at this time, I adjourn the meeting. You all in a week. Bye-bye.